Ladies and gentlemen, let us come to order. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Madeira Beach Board of Commissioners's regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 10th, and the time is 6:01 PM. Commissioner Lister, will you please lead us in this evening's invocation?
I will, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Our most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for being here today as we start a new year of blessings on Madeira Beach. We ask that your continued wisdom and guidance as we make decisions that will affect our citizens. We know that none of this would be possible without you, so as we continue to grow and become leaders here in Pinellas County, may we always look to you first for compassion, for unity, for things are all possible through you. And before we close today, may we ask for the peace that passes understanding for the family of James J. Lawrence, who recently lost his battle with cancer. He will be greatly missed. We ask all these things in his name. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And before we get started, I just wanted to also mention, and Commissioner Lister, thank you very much for remembering Mayor Lawrence in this evening's invocation. Mayor Lawrence was a good friend to the City of Madeira Beach, an outstanding mayor of Vivian Shores, a past president of the Bay Area Governmental Council, and a respected member of the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County. He will be sorely missed, and God bless him and his family. Thank you again, Commissioner Lister. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Palladino?
Here.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Here.
Commissioner Lister?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
A second.
Have a motion a second. Is there any additions or corrections? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
All right, next, distribution of ballots for appointment to District Three. Before you do that, Madam City Clerk, I would like to ask, would any of the applicants like to come up and introduce themselves? Everybody here?
Nick, can you turn the mic on on the podium, please? You've got to speak right into the mic.
I have lived here my entire life.
He's getting it, hang on.
It doesn't sound like it's going through.
I would tap it now.
My name is Ingrid Pharaoh Spildee. I tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived here in this area my entire life. I started when I was 15 years old at Friendly Fishman in Johns Pass. I worked there for nine years. After that, I went to nursing school, and then I became certified in clinical research. I've been doing clinical research for the last 12 years now. I'm also a member of the Planning and Zoning Board for Madeira Beach. Thank you guys for considering me for the open seat for District Three, and thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Oakley?
Hello, Commission. I know most of you. I've worked with you for like six, four to six years for most of you, and I've been on the commission for six years. My name is Nancy Oakley, and I was on for Commissioner District Three, and I would like to come back and help the citizens of Madeira Beach and make this a great town that we all know it is.
And, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to go ahead and, for the record, just let everybody know how this is being done?
Right, so we're, the city clerk is going to go ahead and distribute a ballot to each one of you. Want to make sure that you, when you get your ballot, make sure that there is some signifying aspect of it that would show who you are when you fill out your ballot, either signing it or your initials or the like. Make your vote, and then pass it back to the city clerk. She will go through the process of tabulating that and make an announcement to you, and then whoever the winner is or will go ahead and step down and provide the oath of office to that person. So once the city clerk tabulates that, Amy, if you could just announce who that is. Are each one of the ballots signed or initialed by the commissioners?
The tally is for Ingrid Pharaoh Spildee. I hope I said your name right.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, with that note, can I step down and go ahead and provide her with the oath of office?
Please do, Mr. City Attorney.
I'm going to read this oath to you. If you could raise your right hand. You swore under oath. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Ingrid Pharaoh Spildee.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Florida?
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Charter?
The Charter.
And the Code of Ordinances?
And the Code of Ordinances.
Of the City of Madeira Beach?
Of the City of Madeira Beach.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
My duties?
My duties.
As a member of the Board of Commissioners?
As a member of the Board of Commissioners.
For the City of Madeira Beach?
For the City of Madeira Beach.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law?
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations. We'll leave the sign. Mayor, she can step forward, take her seat now.
Yeah, Commissioner, it's not that easy. You don't get to leave now.
Congratulations.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
I still move.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Is there any comments from staff, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Is there any further comments? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pharaoh Spildee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next presentations, I believe, Mr. Jason Jensen is with us. Mr. Jensen, would you like to come forward to the podium?
Good evening. Have a couple, couple things to deliver, but we were fortunate enough to have Mayor Shane join us to the American Institute of Architects' Awards Banquet, which is the entire Tampa Bay region, five county area of projects that were submitted and judged by independent jury and deemed that Madeira Beach City Hall was indeed the, as we already knew as a community, the best city hall in the Tampa Bay region, but it was also the best designed, best, best project in the entire region due to this award, which is just extremely significant for a municipality to get because you are competing with projects that are from all different types. You could be competing against commercial, a stadium, any number of projects. But the things that they caught on to with this particular project was that it really questioned what the city hall was for, and I think that was questions that we as a team and everybody sitting here had a lot to do to be involved with this, and many sitting in the audience, that we all endeavored to have a city hall that was for the community, that was more than office space, that was more than a place to pay bills or have meetings. It was a place that the community could come to events. It was a place to have a wedding. It was a place to see as your town square, your center of the community, and I think that the awards really picked up on that, that it was designed in such a way to allow all those things to happen, and it's been our pleasure and honor to be a part of the project and to work with all of you and to present you with the HD, HD Row FAIA Award of Design Excellence, the highest award given by the American Institute of Architects.
Thank you, Jason. If you would just go ahead and stand by, I would like to ask the commission to step down for a photo to receive this because I think it's, I believe it's the only municipality to also ever to receive this award, if I'm correct?
That's correct. No, no city hall has ever won this award previously, which I think it's just the vision for this city hall to do something that represents itself. You didn't try to do something that represented another city somewhere else. It truly tries to take in the essence of Madeira Beach, so for it to be the only one to have a significant, you know, design representing the community, only one to have ever been awarded it, yes.
Thank you. Commission, would you please join me on the floor? Cheryl, would you?
Few minutes earlier, we could have had the sunset. I knew it that night. At that night, we did not know the city was going to receive, we knew the city was going to get an award, but we didn't know we were going to get top honors, so.
Terry, why do you get the heavy thing to throw, and I get the paper? Easy with that, Terry. If it falls, it breaks. Just hide by it. Jason, once again, thank you very much, and, you know, what an outstanding job. And if you look at this whole entire project, I think it almost ran exactly one year from groundbreaking to actually moving in, and between you, staff, the residents of the city working together to make this happen, you know, the city hall we were working in, I believe, was over almost 60 years old, built back in, starting in actually the 50s, and there was a lot of issues there, but working to where we saved money, keeping the old city hall working while we were building the new city hall was an outstanding feat in itself to make happen. So, once again, congratulations to your firm also. I mean, y'all did a lot of work, and thank you very much from the City of Madeira Beach. Okay, next, public comment. This section is reserved for public comment on matters pertaining to city business and which are not on the agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Ginger Tolliver?
Hi, Ginger Tolliver, Bay Point Drive. I just want to tell you that I am so tickled that we have a new member on our board. I recently met her. I think it goes along with everything this city is going, coming from an old gray-haired lady. I think we need youth on this board. We have Shane leading the way. Now we have Ingrid. I think it's wonderful. The mayor is wonderful. All of you are wonderful, and it's about time we get out and stay out of the dark ages. I'm all for youth. I think Shane started it, and the mayor, and Nancy, and all of you, I don't really know you, but I just, I'm tickled pink, and I know we're headed for bigger and better things. And Shane, we all love you. You started it.
Hey, Ginger, before you run off, and I want to recognize you real quick, and come back to the podium. I know that you do a lot of work with the kids out there. Would you just tell us a little bit, you know, because you've kind of gotten the city involved and myself involved with helping some kids out and getting on boats, would you, would you tell the organizations that you work with kids, because I think it's outstanding?
Oh, I work with Big Brothers Big Sisters of Tampa Bay. We have, I have started a fund myself called The Bucket List. It all goes back to a young man who was just the cutest thing I ever saw. He's about this big, and he stood up at one of our banquets, and he said, "You know, you guys always feel sorry for us because you think we're poor and we don't have anything." But he said, "See this guy up here," pointing to his big brother. He said, "His bed comes out of the wall." And he said, "And I got my own bed." And he said, "And now I'm in really big trouble." But his big brother said, "Well, I just moved here, dah dah." And he said, "Number one on my bucket list is I want to go on a boat. Does anybody out there have a boat?" Now, this audience is filled with who's who of Tampa Bay. Not one person put up their hand. So, I started a fund called The Bucket List, and number one was to give this child a chance to go on his fishing trip. And I won't say who, but someone not in our community billed my charity $12,000 to take the bigs and littles on a fishing trip, which I thought was an atrocity, but somebody up there was watching out for me and for the Big Brothers Big Sisters, because that was the week of the hurricane. So, anyway, we saved that, and one of, am I allowed to tell the other person's name? Mr. Spieller and Mr. Palladino jumped in and rescued us, and with the help of Mark Hubbard, we're taking these little kids out, and it's not going to cost them a penny. So now we have all that money back in the fund to do things for them in the future. Thank you.
Ginger, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, Madam City Clerk? No. Closing public comment. Next, consent agenda. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Mr. City Manager, do you, any comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, these are very self-explanatory items. We can answer any questions. Otherwise, staff recommends approval for all five, and you can make it all in one motion, or you can hold any of them out and ask questions if you'd like.
Commission, what's your pleasure?
One motion.
Is there any further comment? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Pharaoh Spildee?
Yes.
All right, next, no unfinished business, so we're moving on to new business. New business public hearing for alcoholic beverage application number 2016-07. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, before you tonight is a, is a follow-up to the meeting that you had a couple of weeks ago. This is on an alcoholic beverage permit application that was received from Zeno's Winery, Chocolates and Fine Gifts. Its physical address is 208 Johns Pass Boardwalk East here in Madeira Beach. They currently have an APS license. They want to apply for and obtain a two COP license, which is consumption on premises for the purposes of providing wine tasting. And according to the lease amendment that they have provided, and is in your package, they're also may even charge for that wine tasting. But since the last public hearing, there was a lease addendum that was prepared. It's in your package. It basically provides that the tenant can operate under a two COP license if they obtain it, that no seating is allowed in the wine tasting area except as required by the ADA guidelines, that other than allowing a nominal charge for wine tasting, the tenant shall not, in landlord judgment, deviate from the current business practices or hours of operation, and the tenant shall not advertise or display intent of operating it as a destination bar internally or externally in any manner. If they do do those things, they would be in breach of their amended lease. In determining whether or not that you're going to approve this, you need to remember that there is specific provisions in your code. Those are set forth in 110-532, and these are the five factors that you need to take into consideration in approving this. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Number three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with a particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect public safety. And there's also a requirement that provides that no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. It's my understanding that that has been done. There are no fees owed. So, at this point, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. The applicant can put on a presentation, and then obviously you could hear from the public and then make your decision.
All right. Is the applicant here? It seems like when we saw you 30 days ago.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Gary Foley, the manager of the location.
Luke is Krilley's, the owner.
Would you like us to go through, point by point, the issues that the city attorney brought up?
And, and Commission, I believe, why don't you go ahead, because I think there might be some people in the audience that might have some, and I know hearing from the landlord that he had worked with your lease to go ahead, and there was some provisions made in the lease that the city attorney went ahead and mentioned, but if you would please proceed.
Sir, I hate to be redundant, but can you speak closely into the mic so everybody at home can hear? Thank you. To the extent to which the location and to the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Zeno's Wine Shop is physically located on the boardwalk in Johns Pass Village. We are very short distance from many establishments currently serving alcoholic beverages. We believe our request fits appropriately within the Johns Pass Village community. The extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request would create congestion or present, or present a safety hazard. Zeno's Wine Shop, being located on the boardwalk, is almost 100% reliant upon pedestrian traffic within Johns Pass Village. Those customers exploring the restaurants and shops located in the boardwalk specifically, we do not anticipate contributing to any additional traffic, congestion, or safety hazards within the Johns Pass Village community. Whether or not the proposed use is compatible with particular location for which it is proposed, we believe our request is compatible with the intended use and atmosphere of the Johns Pass Village community. There has, there has been a wine shop at this location for approximately 10 years currently. Whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety, we do not believe the intended use of our shop will in any way adversely affect public safety. Zeno's Wine Shop is not intended as a destination such as a restaurant. Our primary customer purchased wine for consumption at home later. There has been a wine shop at this particular location for many years, and we have no intention of changing our primary sales plan. Therefore, we would anticipate any, we would not anticipate any adverse change in public safety, and no application or review, as the city attorney commented. We do not believe that there are any fees outstanding for Mr. Krilley's business at this location, and we responded as such.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say that this wine shop is very consistent with the surrounding area. I think it'd be a positive addition for us. Guess we need to let, open it up to the public if the applicant has nothing further to provide?
Would anybody from the public like to comment? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
The only thing I, if I, I would like to add is that when we were here last month, something that did not come up into consideration, and something Mr. Krilley's and I have spoken about, this did not affect our current business practice, but as mentioned in the addendum to the, to our lease, we would like at some point in time, if necessary, if we perceived it as being necessary, to have the ability to charge a small and nominal fee for wine tasting. As you can well imagine, a sign that says free wine tasting will invite people who tend to hang around and stay for a while. That's not our intent. We're not looking to do that at this point in time, but we would like to have that as an option available to us in the future, so that is, would like you to consider that as well.
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, that's what's, that's what's mentioned in the lease. I will tell you that I think the state of the law is right now with the, with the APS license that they currently have.
Right.
They can provide wine tasting, and they do not need the two COP. The second they charge for anything in their facility, their, their gift shop, they do have to have that two COP license. So if they charge a nominal fee, they have to have this license.
Thank you.
I think our main concern was, was the bar, and you've addressed that with Guy, so, everybody here has already heard it, but thank you for repeating it. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, this time I will entertain a motion to, for the acceptance of the beverage application number 2016-07.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor. I move that this commission grant an alcoholic beverage application 2016-07 for a two COP license, beer and wine only, sale by drink for consumption on premises and package sales in sealed containers at 208 Johns Pass Boardwalk Place East.
A second.
Have a motion a second. Is there any further comments from staff? Is there any further comments from the commission? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gobahi?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Pharaoh Spildee?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes. Gentlemen, I look forward to coming down and having a taste of wine. Not in abundance, though. Next, financial update. Our fine Assistant City Manager and Finance Director, the floor is yours.
Okay, thanks. I was asked to provide this presentation, which we've done the last couple of years around this same time, so I guess I'll approach it from, I'll try to give you, I guess, two updates. One is more specific to what we have going on in the finance department and what we've been up to over the last couple of months, and then the other is a little bit more specific with respect to the numbers. Excuse me. I, I published the city's September financial report in mid-October and, and sent that to the city commission as consistent with all my other monthly reports, and I indicated on that report... that report, as I have in previous years, that the September report basically represents a tentative report, which is to say that it's unadjusted and is presented on a, on a budget basis. So the city commission should be aware that the budget is managed on a different basis than the comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR. The CAFR is managed on a GAAP basis, that's generally accepted accounting principles. The budget is managed on what we call the budget basis. To give you an example of, you know, easy example as to why there's a distinction between the two and what it means, so in the CAFR, we report, we don't report acquisition expense, we report depreciation expense. So take a sanitation fund vehicle, for instance, that costs a hundred thousand dollars. In the CAFR, we depreciate that vehicle over ten years, and so what you'll see in that report is ten thousand dollars in depreciation expense annually over the life of the vehicle. Whereas in the budget, what we need to have is the appropriation authority to spend a hundred thousand dollars in the current fiscal year. So one of the things that we do between fiscal year end and when the audit starts is we make those adjustments and reconciliations between the budget basis and the GAAP basis. So anyway, that's kind of what I was getting at with the notation in the September report is that although you see those results, that's not exactly what you're going to see in the CAFR. So again, we've been making those kind of accruals and adjustments over the last couple of months. We, of course, receive invoices after the end of the fiscal year that pertain to the prior fiscal year, so we go back and make all those accruals. And then in December, the auditors come out for two or three weeks of onsite field work. In fact, they extended that work into January this time around just because of the holidays, so they've even been onsite this week. And then once we get through the onsite field work, we'll move on to the comprehensive annual financial report, that's the CAFR, and I'll be working on that between, basically between January and February. Excuse me. And every year as we go through this process, we're also informed of the results from the prior fiscal year. We send in an application to the Government Finance Officers Association every year around this time, and we apply for an award that's called the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And I'm happy to say that we recently found out, we did receive that award for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty fifteen. That's the fifth time the city has received that award since I've been here, and we'll, of course, be working on the sixth application here shortly. So that's what we've been up to, and with that, I'll turn to, I guess, a little bit more focus on the actual, the actual finances. I can tell you, and as I reported in that September report, the city's cash and investment balance as of September thirtieth, twenty sixteen, was approximately twenty point four million dollars. That compares to last year's number, which was twenty point six million dollars. So we're talking about a difference of less than one percent over twelve months, which, of course, is better than going in the, in the adverse direction, but isn't necessarily a good or bad thing, it just kind of is. I would note, I guess, a couple of caveats with respect to that cash balance. The first being that that includes seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in new debt that was issued in twenty sixteen, and it includes over six million dollars in stormwater debt that was issued in the prior fiscal year, but that was unspent. So point being, within that twenty-some million dollars is over seven million dollars in unspent debt proceeds, and the thing about unspent debt proceeds is that they will soon become spent. So the direction for cash over the next however many months, you can pretty much bank on the fact that the cash balance will decline for the city. Again, that's not a good or bad thing, it just kind of is where we're going, and it's consistent with the city's financial plan. By the way, those, that, that recent financing was, of course, for the fire department ladder truck. That was a seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar obligation for a major piece of equipment in the fire department. But I guess what I wanted to talk about a little bit tonight was with respect to that cash balance likely going down over the next period of time. One thing I've tried to do, and to this city commission's credit, the board has absolutely accepted and the city manager has provided what I think is very appropriate direction, which is to have the board consider and the board approved for major budget and finance policies that, in my opinion, really set the city up for managing its long-term obligations and managing the city's long-term financial interest. Those four policies, I'm going to kind of walk you through those a little bit, but those were, again, you know, I've kind of hit, I've hit on these a few times now over the last eighteen months or so, but those policies really represent best practices in the industry. They, they are all about prudence and protecting the city's long-term financial position. And ultimately, what they are trying to help us do is manage and evaluate trade-offs because the city's financial plan is all about trade-offs. We've got all kinds of capital projects that have been identified that I think for a long time didn't really go anywhere, they kind of sat in limbo, but we've been trying to get all these projects off the ground, and so there's a lot of decisions that need to be made with respect to how we go about financing those projects. So the first of those policies that we adopted was a budget and fund balance policy, and ultimately what that did was to establish requirements for the city's surplus balances. And as you can imagine, we have, we have quite a bit of surplus balances considering that we have over twenty million dollars, but our budget, you know, our general fund operating budget doesn't touch twenty million dollars, so, you know, we have to manage those balances prudently, and one thing that we've done over the last couple of years is set up new funds and set aside other funds. We have, we have several special revenue funds that, some of which are fairly new, so just to, I guess, provide a little bit of basic update on the special revenue funds. Those consist of the local option sales tax fund, the Archibald Fund, building fund, gas tax fund, and debt service fund. Those balances are set aside as being restricted and can only be used for the intended use of those funds. So that restriction is placed not by the city commission or by anything that we do, but it's typically a state statute or something along the, along those lines that we're meeting those obligations by setting those funds aside for specific purposes. We also have a series of committed balances that have been set aside by this commission, and it's important to note that those balances have been set aside and can only be removed by a similar act of the city commission. So, and again, these are, these are consistent with those budget and finance policies. So if you remember, one thing that fund balance policy required was that we would set aside one-third of the general fund operating budget for emergencies or in the event of a hurricane or similar type of disaster, we would have funding available for that type of situation. So we have a committed balance for emergency reserves of over, over two point one million dollars that can't be spent for any other purpose, and that would have to be approved by the city commission before it could be spent. We have a few other similar balances that we've maintained over the last couple of years, one of which is for what we've called beautification. So, you know, really, that can be defined by the city commission, but I think what it's ultimately intended for is maybe the second phase of the utility undergrounding project, if that comes to fruition. But those funds, those funds represent the remaining lawsuit proceeds from the BP oil spill. So those have been set aside and intended for the use of future beautification projects, and that includes over four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for that purpose. We have also, I guess, I'll have to take a step back here, so we also illustrate in the budget, especially in the general, particularly in the general fund, we try to make a distinction between operating revenues and operating expenditures versus non-operating or non-recurring revenues and expenditures. And we do that to try to get a better feel for the ongoing recurring types of obligations that the city is going to have to be responsible for funding. And ultimately, you know, it's been my, my, I guess, recommendation, and it's been incorporated into the budget the last few years, that if and when we have an operating budget surplus in terms of operating revenues and operating expenditures, that that surplus be set aside for either future debt service obligations or future, future appropriations. I don't know at the moment what that means exactly, those are unidentified, but point being, they're at least not being spent right now. So again, to the city commission's credit, that has been included and adopted in each of the past two fiscal year budgets, to the extent that we now have over four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars set aside for future debt service obligations, and another four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars set aside for future, as of yet, unidentified expenses. And then finally, we get to the general fund unassigned balance, which can be considered the, the most available funds for future appropriations. Those could be spent with any type of resolution or act by the board and basically represent the most liquid source of available general fund dollars. And again, with respect to the, the fund balance policy, we set aside, or we set a commitment that the city would maintain a minimum unassigned balance equivalent to two months of operating expenditures, which equates to a ratio of sixteen point seven percent of the operating budget. And so for fiscal year twenty seventeen, not only have we met the sixteen point seven percent, we're actually quite a bit above that threshold, we're at seventy-one percent. We have an unassigned balance of over four point six million dollars in the general fund. The challenge, of course, is that we don't want to maintain that balance just for one year, but we want to maintain that balance for each year throughout the, the planning period. So the window that we look at is a five-year planning period, and over time, you can expect that that balance will decline, but if we're always maintaining that, if we're always at least exceeding that minimum balance, then we're, we are acting in accordance with our policies. And so the current CIP and five-year projection includes an unassigned balance that is, that is well above that sixteen point seven percent in each year of that, of that planning period. So with that, I'll shift to the investment policy, which was the second of the four policies that the city commission adopted. And the, I guess, probably the foremost priority of that policy was to establish that, again, we're maintaining, we're looking at these surplus balances and trying to address how we manage those surplus balances, that policy set aside, or set up certain priorities for managing the investment balances, those being in order, safety, liquidity, and yield. So I guess in, in simple terms, that means that I, as a city treasurer, am not going to go chasing yield if it means sacrificing safety on any of our fixed income securities. So despite those restrictions and, and within the context of that policy, I can report that for fiscal year twenty sixteen, the annual interest earnings for the city were over eighty-six thousand dollars. That was over a four hundred and fifty percent increase over the prior year, and that was accomplished by a few things, first and foremost being higher prevailing interest rates in the economy. The Federal Reserve raised interest rates by twenty-five basis points in December of twenty fifteen, so for nine months of our fiscal year, we were operating with higher interest rates in the, in the fixed income market. So that was to, of course, to our advantage. But there were also a couple of things that, that we were doing internally that I think made quite a bit of a difference. First being that I was, I was independently placing and bidding CDs independently. In the past, the city has used a third party for that, and I think it's, I think it's fairly common in a lot of these beach towns and small towns, you know, there's a, there's a money market manager or some type of third party that makes those investments on behalf of the city, which is great, but that typically means that they take fifty percent of the interest earnings. So by doing that work independently, I was able to bring in quite a bit more in terms of interest earnings. I also brought to the city commission a couple of new local government investment pools. So if you recall, over the past, I guess, twelve or fourteen months, I had the city enter into new investment pools with the Florida Education and Investment Trust, and Florida Class was the other fund. And so whereas in the past, the city had maybe had quite a bit of its money parked in maybe one or two funds, at any given time over the past year, I was moving funds between three or four investment pools, all of which maintained very competitive rates of interest. And then finally, we recently executed the city's first comprehensive banking services contract, which I don't know that the city, I don't know that the city had ever done anything like that, but not only did that contract modernize our operations and improve some things for my finance staff, it also gave us access to an overnight surplus investment account that, that featured a pretty competitive rate of interest. So all of those combined led to a huge increase in investment earnings. And again, I think from the perspective of that policy, that's ultimately what we're trying to achieve is, you know, we want to be competitive, we want to make sure that we're maintaining our, our finances as, as best as possible. And the third policy that the city adopted recently was, was relating to the city's revenue, and it was called a fees, rates, and charges policy. And I tried to, I tried to highlight the importance of that policy not too long ago when we started talking about the city's parking, parking rates and the pay stations and whatnot. The idea being that, that we wouldn't be just arbitrarily raising rates or, or maybe making convenient decisions with respect to revenue, but that it would be a much more methodical approach that would be based on certain benchmarks, maybe with respect to other communities, and that would take into effect, or take into account competitiveness, the idea being that we wouldn't want to charge a rate for a particular service that Treasure Island or St. Pete Beach is charging a different rate for that would leave us, leave us hurting with respect to, to being competitive. So I guess I just wanted to mention that because I know that's something that we considered with the parking discussion, and I think it's something that we'll want to consider with the mileage rate. I know that we've had discussions on the mileage rate in the past, and I think the city is rightly pretty proud of the fact that we have a two point two zero mileage rate, and I guess in terms of competitive competitiveness, that, that certainly is in line with, with that policy. And finally, the fourth policy that the, that the board adopted was called a debt management policy, and that kind of outlined the, the type of debt that, that the city would permit itself to incur, and it also included some language with respect to how we would manage not only the current debt, but also, but also future debt. And just to reiterate, I guess, what, what we talked about a couple of months ago, I think the city should, should commend itself for the fact that we took advantage of an option to prepay debt just a couple of months ago, and on the city's Series twenty fourteen debt, we prepaid four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in debt principal. And again, with respect to the, the committed balances that the city's maintained, we continue to build up balances for future possible debt service obligations. So I think in managing that debt management policy, we're building a lot of flexibility into the city's ability to, to manage its debt obligations. And with that, I know at one point, the city manager and I had talked about maybe walking through each of the city's debt service obligations, but I'm going to pause at this point and just end it off, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. I'll leave it at that, otherwise.
Mr. Finance Director, so if I understand it from the adopted, the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget and our, and our funding, we have nine point six million dollars in our funds, including parks and recreation, building code administration, transportation is the number that I have here. And then I know in our reserves, which is also called the available unassigned balances, four point six million, that's correct, and then emergency reserves, two point one million.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So overall, and like you said, normally the cities are looking at having a sixteen point six seven, and we have over a seventy percent when it comes to the available unassigned balance.
That's correct.
So we are financially well, from what you see, on as far as our debt services and what we have in our bank reserves?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I don't necessarily have a, a comment as to whether it's good or bad, but to me, you know, the city is certainly on a, a good path, and if we continue to manage the finance... if we continue to manage the finances, from the perspective of these policies, I think we'll continue to be in good shape.
Till there's money in the bank.
There is twenty point four million dollars in the bank as of September thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. Commissioners, any questions?
I, I do, Vince. The, the, under the fund policy balance, the number one, you have four hundred and fifty-five thousand for future debt payments and four hundred and fifty-five thousand for future expenses, which are both unknown, the nine hundred and ten thousand. How long did it take us to get to that four fifty-five? And, and, and the, well, I'll, I'll go for number two, have to answer that.
Two years, so that.
Fantastic.
We started that in fiscal year 2015.
Okay. And then the, obviously, under number two, under the investment, the eighty-six thousand dollars, I, I know how you, you put a, a lot of pressure on yourself to, 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 I guess the interest rates that we, that we see in our budgets are nominal, and to get eighty-six thousand dollars in interest is, is fantastic, and, you know, looking into the future, if I have a crystal ball, I know that the rates are probably going to go up next year, so I'm hoping that this number increases, but to say that you've saved us half of eighty-six thousand dollars, which is forty-three thousand dollars, is just a fantastic job, so I really, I really want to thank you for that. And again, just so far, every, every time I see a report, I'm, I'm enthusiastic about the things that you're doing and, and your staff. I know, I know you have a, a great staff too, Vince, but you're doing a good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think the, the one comment from the seat that I stand in, and Mr. Tonali picked up on it, is, is that we're doing a lot, and so does it look like we're spending a lot of money? Yeah, we, we certainly are, but we have twenty point four million dollars in the bank, and frankly, we're doing fifteen years' worth of capital projects in the last four to five years, including this building, roads, stormwater groynes, you know, you, you name it, seawalls, the, the list goes on and on, and so, we don't want to cry in our Cheerios, but we, we certainly want you all to know that, you know, Dave Mariscano says at best we're pedaling this bike as fast as we possibly can for years prior to where nothing got done, and, and that's just the truth. And so, are we spending a lot of money? Yeah, but you had plenty of money to do what you were doing, and now you're borrowing at a very responsible rate with plenty of money in reserves to take care of what needs to be done. So, I commend Vince, you know, he, he's a conservative finance director, but he watches my tail and he watches yours as well, but we're also getting a lot of projects done in the community that are frankly way overdue.
And Vince, you are out doing an outstanding job, and plus, we're getting a lot of grants to get some matching grants on these projects, so, you know, it's not all cash out. And Dave, thank you again, I've been kind of roaming around Boca Seaga Avenue and Boca Seaga Drive, and that project actually looks like it's ahead of schedule, from what I've seen and from what I've kind of heard. It's moving? Okay. Just take care of the paper for okay. All right. Any further questions?
No.
All right. Vince, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, actually Vince, I do have one more question before we move on. You know, the local, the tax hike that just came out of state, because everybody's probably notices their gas prices have kind of skyrocketed, with that gas tax going up, does that make any difference in our gas tax fund, our appropriations that we're getting from that? Or is it just that minor? It's big in the tank, but is it big to the city?
I wouldn't necessarily anticipate that, I wouldn't necessarily anticipate seeing that in the gas tax fund, no.
Okay.
That is based on a couple of different, it basically, I, I don't want to get into too much.
No, no, no.
Technical here, but it allocates a couple of different revenue sources.
Right.
And so, I, I don't think you're, you're likely to see much of a spike in that fund.
Okay, just tell a hussy ones on that one. All right.
Yeah.
All right. Next ordinance to two zero one seven dash zero one, Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance 2017 dash zero one, an ordinance to the city of Midair Beach, Florida, rezoning certain real property, generally described as one five zero two six Madeira Way, zero Gulf Boulevard, zero one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, one five zero two three Gulf Boulevard, one five zero three one Gulf Boulevard, zero Madeira Way, fifteen thousand Madeira Way, fifteen thousand six Madeira Way, fifteen thousand fifteen Madeira Way, fifteen thousand forty Madeira Way, fifteen thousand forty-two Madeira Way, zero one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, two hundred, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, two oh six one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, two ten one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, two twelve one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, three fifty-two one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, three eighty-eight one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, three ninety one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, four ten one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, four twenty one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. From Plan Development PD District to Plan Development PD District, providing for, reading by title only, and providing for an effective date hereof, I just want to go through a couple of things with you to remind you that this is a quasi judicial proceeding, and pursuant to your code, I need to tell you some basic information about this project. First of all, pursuant to section two dash nine of the code, a summary of the application is as follows. The proposal is for a mixed-use project that will include two hotels, three hundred and sixteen rooms, two condominium buildings, ninety units, ten units on top of Hotel B, thirty-seven thousand square feet of retail space, sixteen thousand square feet of restaurant space, and a marina. The proposed project is located on both sides of Madeira Way, Gulf Boulevard, and Tom Stewart Causeway, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. The project will feature a publicly accessible plaza at the Gulf Boulevard, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue intersection, pedestrian accesses to Boca Seaga Bay, a pedestrian bridge over Gulf Boulevard, and pedestrian enhancements along Madeira Way and one hundred and fiftieth Avenue to the city's Causeway Park. The plan also includes offsite roadway improvements that are included in the development agreement. Now, we're not going to be discussing the development agreement in detail at this meeting, that will be done at the second reading, which is currently set for, I believe, Tuesday, December fourteenth, I mean, it's Tuesday, February fourteenth, here at City Hall at six P M. The standards to be applied tonight to the evidence that you will hear are set forth in section one ten dash three ninety-three of your code. The burden of proof is the greater weight of the evidence that's set forth in section two dash ten A of your code. The parties in the order of the presentations are as follows. The applicant, which is Madeira Beach Town Center LLC and Madeira Commons Inc., next will be city staff through its consultant, Mr. Healy. Next, there are five affected parties, or at least people that have filed forms that claim to be affected parties, and they are as follows, and they are set in the order in which their notices were received. The first one is John Lippa, second is Larry Roloff, third is William Gay, fourth is Stephen Miller, and the fifth is Sam Baker. Then the commissioner will hear from persons that are not parties, there'll be rebuttal by the applicant and by the city, and there will be a brief summary by the applicant and the city. With that information, I need to ask each and every one of you if you've had any expert to communications relative to this particular matter, and if so, if you could state that communication or that contact and the substance of that. And.
Mr. Miller called me, I'm going to say about three months ago, and just discussed some sidewalks.
Okay, and it was on this particular project, or was it on the Holton project?
On this particular project.
Okay. And did you give any particular responses to him?
No, I did not.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
No.
Okay, with that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and swear everyone under oath that is going to present testimony tonight. So anybody that will be talking tonight, if you could stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath, anyone that's going to speak. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, everyone, I appreciate that. So Mayor, now's the opportunity for Ms. Wells, who is the attorney for the developer, to make her presentation.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the commission, my name is Kate Wells, I'm an attorney with Shoemaker Looping Kendrick, one oh one, East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite twenty-eight hundred in Tampa, Florida. I believe this is the appropriate time to raise any objections to the petitions that were filed by individuals seeking affected party status. At the outset of the Planning Commission meeting on December twelfth, and again this evening, I am objecting to the petitions filed by Mr. Miller and Mr. Baker. Neither Mr. Miller nor Mr. Baker are located within the notice area, and the petitions that they filed did not articulate how either individual meets the definition of affected party status. More specifically, neither individual articulated how an interest protected or furthered by the comprehensive plan is adversely affected by our project, or how this adverse impact exceeds in degree that of the general interest of the community. We are handing out an aerial that depicts where Mr. Miller and Mr. Baker reside in relation to our project. It shows that Mr. Miller's residence is approximately fifteen hundred feet from our site, Mr. Baker's residence is over four thousand feet from our site, and for that reason, we object to their petitions. And I don't know, Mr. Trask, if you want to address that at this point or later in the process.
Mr. Mayor, now's the opportunity for you to understand what the decision that you'll have to make, I'm going to go ahead and read you the law, but my suggestion is, and if you need me to read it again when they come up, if those people still want to make a presentation, you're going to have to determine whether or not that you're going to allow them to be deemed affected parties, affected persons, rather. If you, if you, if you do find that they are not affected persons, they still have the opportunity to speak, they're just not treated as a party to this matter. So let me go ahead and read the law to you relative to the code, and then one portion of the statute, and then my suggestion is, is that we allow Ms. Wells to continue on with her case, and then when we get to the point of those people needing to speak, I think you're going to need to hear from them, first of all, on the issue of how they, how they believe that they're an affected person, and once they've made that argument to you, you'll have to make that decision before they make any presentations. So let me just read you your code. An affected person is the owner, resident, or other occupant of the real property which is the subject of a quasi judicial proceeding, or an aggrieved or adversely affected party as the term is defined in section one sixty-three point three two one five, print two Florida statutes. So I'm going to read that portion of the statute to you. As used in this section, the term aggrieved or adversely affected party means any person or local government that will suffer an adverse effect to an interest protected or furthered by the local government comprehensive plan, including interests related to health and safety, police and fire protection service systems, densities or intensities of development, transportation facilities, healthcare facilities, equipment or services, and environmental or natural resources. And this is the key portion, Mr. Mayor. The alleged adverse interest may be shared in common with other members of the community at large, but must exceed in degree the general interest in the community good shared by all persons. This term includes the owner, developer, or applicant for a development order. So when we get to that point, after the city's presentation, you're going to need to make a decision as to whether or not Mr. Baker and Mr. Miller should be deemed affected persons, and that will either be a yes or a no, and if you think, if you're taking the position they're an affected person, they will be able to present whatever they want to present as a party. Otherwise, they'll have to wait their turn and speak with the public, and they'll be limited in their time. So.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you. Before we get started with our presentation, I want to take a moment to introduce our team. On behalf of the applicant, Madeira Beach Town Center, we have Bill Karns, Kevin Bowden, and Steve Reynard. Also present, Tim Clemmons, a registered architect with Mesh Architecture, Robert Pergilisi, a professional transportation planner with Gulf Coast Consulting, and Cindy Tara Panny, a professional urban planner with Florida Design Consultants. And Mr. Mayor, just one housekeeping matter, I want to confirm for the record that the evidence and testimony from the Planning Commission hearing on December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and the video and written transcripts of the neighborhood meetings on December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, are incorporated into the record of tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Sorry, I want to make sure that there was a nodding of the head.
Yes, proceed, yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Because there is a court reporter here tonight.
That is a yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those of you who are on the commission in May and June of last year, this project will look familiar. That's because this commission approved the rezoning application and development agreement that allowed two eleven-story hotels with up to four hundred and thirty rooms, two eight-story condominiums with up to ninety units, a marina development, and up to fifty thousand square feet of retail and/or restaurant uses. Notwithstanding the approvals that we obtained in June, my client, in response to concerns expressed by members of the community, made a business decision to redesign the project to comply with the standards in place prior to the two thousand and fourteen amendments to your comprehensive plan and the special area plan, and to start the process anew. My client is seeking to rezone the property from plan development to plan development and enter into a new development agreement, which if approved by this commission, will supersede and replace the development rights granted on June fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Since we're starting the process anew, and in compliance with the city's code, we held not one, but two neighborhood meetings on December sixth, two thousand and sixteen, and we appeared before the Planning Commission on December twelfth. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of our application. As Mr. Trask advised, tonight's hearing is a quasi judicial land use hearing, which is different from a legislative hearing. When this commission wears its legislative hat, the commission is creating citywide policy by adopting regulations. On the other hand, in a quasi judicial hearing, this commission applies those cities adopted recommendations, regulations, excuse me. The purpose of the hearing is not to generally explore how people feel about the kind of uses that are being proposed, or whether, or whether the regulations go far enough or too far. The purpose of the hearing is to fairly, even-handedly, and impartially determine whether we have met the city's standards. This is done through testimony evidence, both oral and written, introduced into the record of tonight's public hearing. The appropriate quality of evidence is competent substantial evidence on the issue of whether our application meets the city's code requirements. Competent substantial evidence is the only type of evidence this commission may consider. As this hearing progresses and you hear testimony from your staff, from members of my client's professional consulting team, and from the public, you should ask yourself, is the testimony fact-based, material, and reliable? Is the testimony relevant to whether the application complies with the criteria in the code? Conversely, is the testimony hypothetical? Is it based upon speculation or fear? Or is the testimony emotional, generalized statements that do not specifically address the criteria in the code? This type of testimony is not competent substantial evidence that can be relied upon or is relevant in the review of a rezoning application. Your decision cannot be based upon personal preferences, or comments you may overhear in the public, or what you may hear or read in the media. Your role in a quasi judicial proceeding requires you to review our project against the city's regulatory framework. This includes the city's comprehensive plan, the special area plan, and the code of ordinances, and to decide if we established compliance with the code by competent substantial evidence. The criteria to be met are set forth in sections one ten dash three ninety-one and one ten dash three ninety-three. Each member of our team will provide testimony and documentary evidence, which we believe establishes by competent substantial evidence that our project complies with each of the criteria. In addition, your materials include a staff report, which provides a detailed analysis as to how our application complies with the code and recommends approval of our application. Before I turn the presentation over to Mr. Clemmons, I would like to submit the resumes for Mr. Clemmons, Mr. Pergilisi, and Ms. Tara Panny into the record. At the beginning of each of their presentations, they will give you a brief overview of their professional experience, credentials, and qualifications. At that point in the hearing, I would like the commission to accept each of them as expert witnesses in their respective areas of experience. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clemmons. Thank you.
Good evening, how are you tonight? My name is Tim Clemmons, and could I have the screen, please? While we're waiting for that, I'll give you my fifteen-second resume. I'm licensed architect and senior principal with Mesh Architecture, loc-, yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Tim Clemmons, I'm the licensed architect and senior principal with Mesh Architecture, located in downtown St. Petersburg, and I have thirty years of experience in urban mixed-use projects. And let me get this to wake back up. What I'd like to do tonight is to. And so... Last time it just came right up. I'm sorry? Just opening it, yeah. No, it just, it won't come up.
Nick, can you step out and give us a hand? It's not coming up, even though he's clicking on it.
No, but it... Go ahead.
There you go, thanks.
Now, how do I get it to go? You can see what my strong points are. So what I'd like to do tonight is to quickly take you through the revised master plan. And what I'm going to do at several locations is compare it to the previous master plan that we showed you last summer. You're going to see a lot of similarities. What we've really done is just kind of rearranged the, some of the pieces a little bit, and in four of the five different buildings significantly reduced the size of those buildings. This is an aerial view of Madeira Beach as a whole, and right in the center, in the yellow, are the two properties that we'll be discussing tonight. As I close in, you can see they're right in the town center, as designated by the special area plan. The two yellow properties are a total of about six point seven acres. There's about two point two acres in the triangular area block to the south, and about four and a half acres in the, the sort of L-shaped, a reverse L-shaped property running along the intercoastal. And here, and this has been rotated a little bit from the aerial, but, and here's the new master plan. The first thing I'll point out is that, because this is key now, and one of the issues which prompted some of the revisions, the, in the special area plan, it divides the town center property into a couple of planned sub-districts. So if you look at, and see condo A, you can see sort of a vertical line cutting that building in half, if you will, and to the left of that vertical line is the commercial core planned sub-district, and to the right of that line is the Causeway planned sub-district. And they have different zoning rules and different ways of calculating allowable densities. So that's, again, influenced some of the revisions. But overall, the goals have really remained the same as they always were, to create a plan that's consistent with the special area plan from Madeira Beach, that, and in doing so, becomes a real mixed-use town center for, for the city. So we're trying to create a gateway into the city from the Tom Stewart Causeway. We're trying to create a sense of place with a variety of public spaces and gathering places. We're trying to create more vitality and economic benefit to the city through mixed uses of hotel, retail, and condominium use, as well as the marina and, and public spaces. So this is the previous master plan, and the biggest change you're going to see, and I know it's a little hard to read here with the, with the lights on, but is, if you look at, at the right-hand half of the slide, you'll see the dock master building in between condo A and condo B. And if you go back, if I go back to the previous master plan, you can see now that the dock master building is on the furthest east, closest to the Causeway Park and the Tom Stewart Causeway. And again, this is mainly, or at least functionally, was in response to the lower density that's allowed within the Causeway District, and we're pulling over condo A, the majority of condo A, into the commercial core district, which does allow for a higher intense uses. What I like about this, and what we, you know, although we did it initially in response to the zoning restrictions, what it's doing for us, it's just creating, I think, a softer entry into the city, and that our one-story building with lots of open space around it, and the view corridor to the marina, has been pulled adjacent to the Causeway Park, and almost, I think will visually act as a, as an extension of the public realm of that park itself. And I'll show that to you in some images in just a second. As you move further to the west, then we have the two condominium buildings. You can see that the, the entryway to those is shared between the two buildings, and it aligns with the existing curb cut across the street to the south. And again, as you continue further west, you come to Madeira Way, and we have the two larger buildings, which are Hotel A and Hotel B. Both have retail space underneath, as shown in the, the pink color. There's about five thousand square feet of retail space in Hotel A, and about forty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant space in Hotel B. And we still have the public plaza right at the intersection of Gulf Boulevard and One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue. Here's an overall view, an aerial view, looking from the, from the southeast. And again, on the far right of the slide, you're seeing the Tom Stewart Causeway, or you're seeing One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue just beyond the Tom Stewart Causeway, a little bit of the Causeway Park. And as I mentioned, you can see the dock master building, that, with the landscaped areas around it and the open marina. And again, our, our goal there is to have it visually feel like an extension of the park before you get to the more intense development as you move towards the town center. The two condominium buildings there together. And previously, the two condominium buildings were eight stories tall. There were two levels of parking with six levels of condominiums above. We've now reduced those to six levels total. So there are now four levels of condominiums over two levels of parking. So in the previous master plan, you can see the dock master building in between, but you can, if you focus on the, the height and the size of the two buildings, and whereas before they were the same height as Madeira Cove, they've now been reduced in size to be the same height as Boca Vista. They're six stories, like I said, they're six stories tall instead of eight stories And I'll talk a little bit more in detail about the hotels with a couple of other images This, this drawing is, I want to highlight the public spaces and common areas that are being dedicated for public use with, on the private property. So the cross-hatched areas indicate a variety of public spaces and public walks that, even though they're on private property, will be dedicated through easement for the enjoyment and benefit of the citizens of Madeira Beach, as well as visitors. So first, along and parallel to One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, we have a twelve-foot-wide pedestrian bike trail. One of the goals in the special area plan is to create better pedestrian connections across the town center, and especially to existing parks and amenities within the community. So we're extending all the way from Causeway Park, all the way down to Madeira Way, and ultimately Gulf Boulevard, a pedestrian way and bicycle trail. Paralleling that, along the marina and the intercoastal, we're creating a second walkway that, even though the marina's a private marina, there'll be a, another walkway that'll be open and to the public. That walkway has a two-foot seawall plus an eight-foot walkway for a total width of ten feet, and that extends the entire length of the marina behind the condominium buildings and behind Hotel A. Because of the geometry of the street and the way this, Madeira Way has been widened over time, the street basically comes right up to the public right-of-way. So we've located Hotel A back twenty feet, aligning it with the post office building and the shops a little bit to the, further to the west, but also created a generous twenty-foot-wide public sidewalk in front of the building. So although that'll function as a public, public sidewalk, it is technically on private property, but again, an easement would be dedicated for that. And then lastly, is at the, right at the intersection of Gulf Boulevard and One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, the triangular park, Madeira, Madeira Plaza, we're calling it. It's approximately one-half acre in size, and that'll be dedicated as a public park. Here's a view coming over the Tom Stewart Causeway, and this is what you'll see as you come in, and I think this gives a good indication of our goals as a gateway and entryway into the community from, from the mainland of Pinellas County. Immediately to your right is the dock master building. It's set back from the street, so we can get some generous landscaping, and you can see the bicycle and pedestrian trail. And then further along, about three hundred feet up, is the first condominium building. This is a little bit higher in angle, but this was the previous view where, again, the dock master building is between the two condominium buildings. So you first came to the eight-story building, and again, we've pulled that back further away from the park. A little bit more close-up shot of the, of the dock master building. And again, this, I think this slide really shows how much the condominium buildings have changed in scale, the six stories, and then here you can see it as eight stories. And now we've come further, further west on One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, getting closer to the intersection of Gulf Boulevard. And here are the two hotels. So both hotels now are eight stories tall. They have three levels of parking. So Hotel A has, on the first level is the lobby, retail space, the garage entry, and a few parking spaces. The main parking levels are on levels two and three, and then there's five levels of hotel rooms above, so it's a total of a hundred and forty-eight hotel rooms, whereas previously that hotel was contemplated to have a hundred and eighty hotel rooms, what was approved last summer. So we've taken about a twenty percent reduction in the number of hotel rooms in Hotel A, and we've reduced it from eleven stories to eight stories. So we've taken three floors off of Hotel A. Hotel B still has the large forty thousand square feet of retail and restaurant space. We haven't reduced that at all, because it's important to, I think, get the vitality and the life within this location. But we've reduced the number of hotel rooms from two hundred and fifty hotel rooms to a hundred and sixty-eight hotel rooms. So that's more than a, it's almost a thirty percent reduction in the number of hotel rooms. In doing that, it's also allowed us to take off one level of parking. So I think the scale of the building, the base of the building, has got a more pleasing scale. It's three stories instead of four stories for the base. Then there's four levels of hotel rooms, and then we've added actually back ten condominium units to this building. So there's a total of eight stories on this hotel as well, whereas previously it also was eleven stories. So comparing it to the Ocean Sands condominiums across the street with the, the blue towers, those are twelve-story buildings. Previously, we were about the same height as those, at eleven stories. We're now substantially less, with these being reduced from eleven stories to eight stories. I neglected to mention, when I talked about the condominiums, previously both condominium buildings had forty-five condominium units for a total of ninety units. We actually reduced the size of condominium A from forty-five units to thirty-six units, and we reduced the size of condominium B from forty-five units to forty-four condominium units. So we reduced the size of condominium A, condominium B, from ninety units to eighty units, but we've relocated those ten condominium units to Hotel B. But overall, like I said, there's been a twenty percent reduction in Hotel A and the number of hotel rooms, and about a thirty percent reduction in Hotel B. So here is the previous scheme. You can see the eleven-story buildings at the same height as Ocean Sands, and here you can see that they've been brought down considerably in size. This is a view from Archibald Park, looking back Madeira Way, looking to the east. And again, I just want to emphasize the, the change in scale of the two hotels. Here they are at eleven stories, which is the previous scheme, and here they are at eight stories, as we're now proposing. It's a little bit more subtle, but also in this scheme, there was eighty feet between the two hotel buildings. One of the things we heard from the community is, just with the height of the buildings, and then only being eighty feet apart, the street felt too narrow, too confined. We also, our building was placed in front of the post office building, so we've pulled, not only have pulled the buildings down by three stories, or about thirty feet, we've also pulled Hotel A ten feet further away, so now it's ninety feet. So it changes the proportion of the, of the, of the space between the buildings quite a bit. So if you look at the, the height-to-width ratio of this, what we call the street corridor, from an urban design terminology, you can see it's changed quite a bit. And then, I think I'm getting near the end here. This is, again, Hotel B, if you're on Gulf Boulevard, traveling from the south, this is the new view with the one level of retail, two levels of parking, then the five stories of hotel and condominium. And this is the old slide with eleven stories. So again, you can see the, again, a substantial reduction in the size of the building. The, but the, the public space and the public plaza and park here at the corner is still really important, in our mind, of creating a strong sense of place. So even though we've reduced the size of the buildings, and we've not touched this at all, we really think it's really important, this is important to the community, to maintain this space, and like I said, the vitality of the retail and restaurant spaces that run onto it. With that, I'm just going to leave you with perhaps the overall view of the aerial view, and turn it over to Mr. Pergilizzi to talk about the transportation and traffic issues. Thank you. Yes, sir. And I'm, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
It looks like you moved the setbacks a little bit from the previous project to this project. Is that the case? I mean, the drawings look like, is it, is that so?
Like I said, the, well, let's see, the, the changes in terms of setbacks, where Hotel A moved ten feet further off of Madeira Way, so we widened, increased that setback. We, the setbacks of the two condominium buildings from One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue didn't change. Those properties are relatively narrow, so those stayed the same. And then Hotel B pretty much stayed the same in terms of the footprint of the retail space. The, and the, you know, the dock master building, of course, moved, and so the open space that was previously between the two condominium buildings, we've now preserved a hundred-foot view corridor between the two condominium buildings, but the main view corridor, and if you, and I think this slide sort of illustrates that, if you look at the condominium buildings across the street, by pulling condominium, by sort of flipping the dock master building and condominium building A, I think it provides a better view corridor towards the intercoastal, well, both the canal here, but also the greater Boca Siega Bay intercoastal waterway. So it, I think it opens up that view corridor for them a little bit better, too.
And the other question I had, and you, you actually identified it, was the sidewalk areas tying into the parks, and maybe eventually rolling around underneath Tom Stewart Causeway, working something through there, maybe through other developments?
Well, and I may be speaking out of turn here, but I believe Mr. Holton's project may be doing, connecting his property to the Causeway Park, then ours connects to the Causeway Park. So if all of that happens, then you would have a continuity between, really from Archibald Park all the way to the far east end of the, you know, this peninsula.
Thank you. Any commissioners have other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Robert Pergilizzi. I'm a AICP certified planner and a PTP professional transportation planner with Gulf Coast Consulting, and I've got twenty-eight years of experience here in Tampa Bay area. We conducted a traffic study for this project in February 2016, which, as you know, was approved in June. We've revised the traffic study in November to reflect the reductions to the project intensity that Tim has described. All our traffic counts were adjusted to peak season conditions, so they can represent a worst-case scenario.
if you look at the condominium buildings across the street, by pulling condominium, by sort of flipping the Dockmaster Building and condominium Building A, I think it provides a better view corridor towards the intercoastal, well, both the canal here, but also the greater Boca Siega Bay intercoastal waterway. So, it, I think it opens up that view corridor for them a little bit better, too.
And the other question I had, and you actually identified it, was the sidewalk areas tying into the parks, and maybe eventually rolling around underneath Tom Stewart Causeway, working something through there, maybe through elements?
Well, and I may be speaking out of turn here, but I believe Mr. Holton's project may be doing, connecting his property to the Causeway Park, then ours connects to the Causeway Park. So, if all of that happens, then you would have a continuity between, really, from Archibald Park all the way to the far east end of the, you know, this peninsula.
Thank you. Any commissioners have other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Robert Pergulizzi. I'm a AICP certified planner and a PTP professional transportation planner with Gulf Coast Consulting, and I've got twenty-eight years of experience here in Tampa Bay area. We conducted a traffic study for this project in February 2016, which, as you know, was approved in June. We've revised the traffic study in November to reflect the reductions to the project intensity that Tim has described. All our traffic counts were adjusted to peak season conditions, so they can represent a worst-case scenario. The expected traffic, we added in the expected traffic from the Holton Holiday Isle project into this study, so we could have a cumulative effect. This analysis would include a cumulative, cumulative effect of both projects. And to answer your question, Mayor, the Holiday Isle project does include a pedestrian underpass underneath the Tom Stewart Causeway Bridge. The revised Madeira Beach Town Center project, project traffic per ITE, which is instituted transportation engineers' trip generation rates, is two thousand nine hundred fifty-eight daily trips, of which two hundred and twenty-four would occur during the PM peak hour. This represents a twenty-four percent reduction as compared to the project that was approved in June. We've evaluated several improvements. One is the modification of the traffic signal at One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue and Madeira Way. And I use the word modification, because I know the word removal has been talked about, and I want to be clear. The only thing that would be removed is the vehicular indications for the left turns from Madeira Way to eastbound Tom Stewart Causeway, eastbound One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue. Based on concerns raised by residents, particularly on the south side, regarding pedestrian crossing and the need for a pedestrian crossing, we're proposing to keep the signal indications for eastbound, westbound traffic on One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, and retain a pedestrian push-button crosswalk, so that pedestrians can cross One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue. And when they push the button, the lights for One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue would turn red, so they can have a safe passage. We also include modification of medians, to lengthen left turn lanes, and also to add turn lanes where left turn lanes do not exist. Those are both safety and capacity improvements. In addition, and I think Tim may have mentioned it, there are removal of several driveways on the north side of One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue. I believe we're going from eight existing driveways down to two. And that in itself increases safety by reducing the conflict points. And then finally, there's a proposed elevated crosswalk over Gulf Boulevard. In summary, with the cumulative impacts of both the Holiday Isle project and the Madeira Beach Town Center project, as proposed, One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue would still operate at Level of Service C, carrying approximately twenty-eight hundred vehicles during the peak hour. Gulf Boulevard would still operate at Level of Service D, and the signalized intersections would operate at Level of Service C or better. The median modifications and signal changes were discussed multiple times with FDOT, and I'm sure there will be more discussions. And as you've been told, or you probably know, FDOT permits will be required, and full design will be required by FDOT. If this project is approved and moves forward, we would then be moving towards the engineering design and submitting for permits with the Department of Transportation on this. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, and after that, turn it over to Cindy Terrapini.
Okay, and I think you covered my question, and I was going back to, after, say, this is considered to move forward, where do we go on the traffic study? Is the traffic study actually goes back to FDOT?
We have to submit a full application to FDOT with actual design plans of the median modifications to their standards.
Okay. And my only other question is, I know there's been a discussion about the traffic light, and I know that FDOT at this time says that they don't warrant a traffic light, and maybe I'll, when we get to the owner's part, I'll, I'll have a question for him on that one.
Yes, sir.
So, no? Commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Robert, I know you're working on both projects, right? The access where the left turn comes into, close to Snug Harbor, where the Marina, well, access, in other words, Marina?
The Marina driveway?
Yes, the Marina driveway will line up with that median. I'm not sure which, you know, party would be addressing that, whether it would be Mr. Carnes or Mr. Holden.
I can answer that.
Yeah, please go ahead.
The median opening, there's the first median opening after you come over the bridge.
Yes.
That is the access to the city Marina. That would be a full access to Mr. Holton's Holiday Isle project, and that would be Mr. Holton's responsibility to make.
Yes, well, that was the first median, but the second median will affect the two condominiums, Snug Harbor.
Oh, the median opening at Boca Siega?
Yes.
Boca Vista?
Boca Vista, yes, where it lines up with your Marina.
Yeah, it lines up with the Marina.
Yes.
That is a location where I believe we would be adding a left turn lane to turn into the Marina where none currently exists. And that's a, both a capacity and a safety improvement.
Yes, I understand that, but, but currently, that particular access will require a U-turn for Snug Harbor. In other words, at that very median, Snug Harbor residents would have to make a U-turn to come back into, are you looking at that? How would you propose to address that?
Well, the Snug Harbor U-turns that occur now are included in our traffic counts, so we have the impact of those considered in. And if we need to make any improvements to that left turn lane, we would. I'm not sure, right now, we are proposing to lengthen that left turn lane.
You're proposing to increase that, right?
Increase the length of the left turn lane?
Yes.
Yes, to meet FDOT standards.
All right, so the Snug Harbor residents will still continue to make that U-turn?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other ways to, to maybe mitigate that, to make it easier for the Snug Harbor residents to access their driveway?
No, because the Department of Transportation would not give another median opening that close to an existing median opening. So, they have right turn-in, right turn-out access?
Yes.
And if those people are seeking to go west, out towards Gulf Boulevard, they would continue to do what they do now. They actually turn into the city Marina, and then they come out and make a left turn and go that way. And that was explained to them at the December sixth, December sixth meeting.
Mr. Pergulizzi?
They are still limited to right in, right out. Their access is not changing at all.
Refresh my mind, because you come in and out there a lot, and I very rarely do. Can you explain how it works now? Because I'm trying to think of my mind.
Yes, currently, currently, if I would have to go to the beach, I would have to make a right turn and make a, basically, U-turn at the entrance to the Marina.
Right.
Go into the Marina property, make a U-turn, and then line up with the first median off the bridge, and then make a left. There is no way that I would be able to make a left turn out of my, you know, Snug Harbor condominiums.
And currently, that's the way it is now, though?
That's currently, that's the way it is, yes.
Okay. And, and I know, I don't want to go too far off subject and go to another project, but I know this concerns another project, but I know there's been discussions, working forward to doing a roundabout underneath Tom Stewart Causeway to kind of alleviate that.
That would be just pedestrian.
That would just be pedestrian, okay, so that's not.
Pedestrian bridge, pedestrian walkway underneath the bridge.
Okay.
For the Holiday Isle.
My name is Cindy Terrapini. I'm Vice President of Planning with Florida Design Consultants, representing the applicant tonight. I've passed out my planning analysis on this project, and would ask if that be accepted into the record for tonight's proceeding. As Kate mentioned, and you have my resume also, I've been a planner for over thirty-five years, both in the public and private sectors, primarily in the Pinellas County, Pasco County, Hillsborough County, and a little bit in Hernando County as well. I've been qualified as an expert witness in urban and regional planning in many local jurisdictions, as well as in the circuit courts of Hillsborough, Pinellas, Pasco, and Hernando Counties. I was asked to take a look at the project with regard to compliance with the criteria in your code for a planned development project, and that's what I want to talk about tonight. And my report goes through it in detail, and I'm going to summarize it due to a little bit of time constraints, and try and condense it for you down to the key points. And there are really five or six key points. The first one is whether the site is consistent with your comprehensive plan, and I have found that it is. First of all, the site is designated as PRMU, and let's call out what that means. It stands for Planned Redevelopment Mixed Use, which is an exact description of what this project is. It is redevelopment of an existing site and sites, and it is a mixed-use project, as Mr. Clemmons has described to you. And that your comp plan says that the PRMU category should facilitate infill and redevelopment of the areas to create a desirable mix of uses. So, clearly, it is consistent with the plan category. The PRMU plan category is implemented by a specific special area plan, which in this case is called the Madeira Beach Special Area Plan, and it covers not only this property, but a total of about ninety-five acres, right in your town center. The special area plan goes on to divide the area into five character districts, and the site is located in two of them. The largest portion of the site is located in the commercial core. That's where Hotels A and B and the retail and the plaza are located, and a portion of the westernmost condo. The second area is the Causeway District, which is a smaller area, and that's where the Marina and a portion of the residential condominium units are located. If you'll turn to page six, it has all the mathematical calculations to demonstrate that the project is consistent with the FAR, the density and the, for the condominiums, and the density for the hotels. It's divided up by the two character districts, because we are not, for this application, relying on any of the two thousand fourteen amendments to the special area plan, the land development code, or the comprehensive plan. In other words, we are relying only on the two thousand nine special area plan as it was adopted. So, that's what this table two represents, in demonstrating that we are well in compliance with the density for condominium, the density for hotel, and the amount of non, non-commercial, non-residential, the commercial uses. I won't go through all of them, but I just want to highlight a couple of the objectives of the special area plan that the site is consistent with. We propose a unique sense of place for the town center, and you can clearly see from the design presented by Mr. Clemmons, that it does create a unique town center, a unique place that we don't have today in Madeira Beach. It promotes a wide variety of uses, to create an activity center, to draw residents and tourists alike. It sets a standard for urban design, as exemplified by the designs that you have seen presented earlier tonight. The objective, to increase the number of temporary lodging units, we are doing that with this proposal by increasing it by three hundred and sixteen new hotel rooms, and we are maintaining existing residential by adding ninety residential units. There was a sketch that, a page that Mr. Clemmons presented that showed the improved pedestrian and bicycling access for the project, and it is significant. The entire frontage of the property along the north side of One Hundred and Fiftieth or Causeway, from Causeway Park all the way to Madeira Way, is a new pedestrian access way that will be dedicated to the public and required to be maintained to the public through an easement, and all of those provisions are spelled out in the development agreement that you will hear at your next meeting. The second main access way is along the waterfront, because everybody wants to lock, walk along the waterfront, again, from your Causeway Park, along the entire waterfront to the western edge of our property, which is Hotel A. And the key feature that I think we need to really emphasize how important that will be to the future of the city, is that Triangle Plaza at the intersection of Gulf Way, Gulf Boulevard, excuse me, and the Causeway. And that's really, I think, going to create a special place for people to enjoy in being outdoors in the wonderful Florida environment that we have. Additionally, one of the last objectives is to develop parking and access strategies to make an efficient use of scarce land. As Mr. Clemmons described, all four of the buildings include structured parking. The only portion of the site that has at-grade parking is the Marina, for obvious reasons. People are going to come up with the items they want to load on their boat, and they need to have an easy access to the Marina and to their boat. Both condominiums and both hotels all contain structured parking. And then we are also, through this project, making a major improvement to Madeira Way, to make it a place that pedestrians do feel comfortable and are enjoying walking along, and to enjoy the retail and the restaurant activities along there. Redevelopment is what is intended by the special area plan, and that is what is proposed by this project in a mixed-use way that we have just talked about. The second main area is compatibility with the neighborhood, compatibility with existing uses. If we start with the condominiums on the east end of the property, that, they are clearly, at six stories, more compatible, most compatible with the residential's to the south of them, which range in height from four to eight stories. We are right in there at six, so we're, we're above the lowest, but certainly below the highest of those units. In addition, we comply with the board criteria number five, that the scale and the proportion of the project is consistent with the neighborhood and appropriate to that neighborhood. So, we are, we believe that we have showed that, shown you that. With regard to the hotels at the west end, as you saw in Mr. Clemmons's design, the existing twelve-story condominium buildings on Gulf Boulevard, we are well under that. We are now at eight stories, as opposed to the existing twelve, and again, separated by the Gulf Boulevard and the public plaza and the Madeira Way, to create that sense of place. The third major criteria that we evaluate the project against was whether or not adequate public facilities are provided for the site, and that has to do with all, includes sewer, water, potable water, wastewater treatment, transportation, recreation, stormwater management. Recreation, stormwater management, we are in compliance with, as demonstrated in the special area plan, which did an infrastructure analysis, and some people have not understood that what the infrastructure analysis did in the special area plan was say, okay, if all of this develops as is intended in the special area plan, can our roads, our water, and our sewer handle this new development? And your own evaluation confirmed that it would. So, we are relying on that. Additionally, the applicant's traffic consultant, Mr. Pergulizzi, who you just heard from, demonstrated that specifically, looking at this site and the access to this site, that the project would be concurrent with regard to the level of service on Tom Stewart Causeway, and he outlined some improvements that the project would make. And again, those improvements will be confirmed in the development agreement, not before you tonight, but will be before you, before you take your final vote on this case. The fourth major criteria is public interest, and that has to do with whether the project encourages the redevelopment proposed by the special area plan, and what other aspects of the project will contribute to the public domain and to the public improvement. Clearly, has been talked about, the, the open space, the scenic views and vistas that are maintained along the Causeway, the variety of the two pedestrian accessways that are proposed, and the public plaza, all of those will contribute to the public realm, as will the redevelopment that will add to your, to your tax base and to the city's overall growth and redevelopment. The fifth major category is whether the project is consistent with the land development regulations. The PRMU and the special area plan require a project of this type to be submitted as a planned development, and we have complied with all the planned development requirements. We're not asking for variances to parking or any of those other aspects. But in, within the planned development, you have the ability to confirm that our specific site plan works with its neighbors, works with the rest of the development in the city, and really is in compliance with what you envision that special area plan. And I would submit to you that we believe that it does do that. Again, those improvements that we have to make, and those commitments that we are making, are not only confirmed in the planned development site plan that we cannot deviate from, but they'll also be confirmed in the development agreement that you will have to reach a decision on at your next meeting. The fifth, fifth criteria is consistency with the land development regulations. It has been submitted as a PD, as we've just talked about. We held two neighborhood meetings, as Ms. Wells discussed, on December sixth, which is a requirement of the PD. We have demonstrated in the PD site plan and the application materials that we comply with all the development standards in the city and with the special area plan, design elements, as Mr. Clemmons has aptly demonstrated to you tonight. And the project is concurrent for all public utilities. Now, the last general area is design elements, and there are quite a few of those. I won't go through all of them, but I think that you can see from the package that we've submitted and from Mr. Clemmons's presentation, that this project will make a very positive contribution towards a new design for the city and a redevelopment of this area of Madeira Beach. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I would ask that my report be entered into the record for tonight's proceedings. Thank you very much.
Actually, a question on the infrastructure. You know, I know the plan originally showed that the infrastructure for two thousand nine is good, and the two thousand nine plan for what you're doing, but who doubles checks? That has to go back through the county, correct? Or the state?
With regard to the roads, let's tell there, each one is a little different. So, the roads, clearly, that, because it's a DOT road, that will have to be approved by DOT, by Mr. Pergulizzi's permit application. He will, will approve that. The specific driveway connections, all of that will be approved by DOT. Whether the site is concurrent for transportation will be confirmed by your staff when you, when we go through detailed site plan review. So, and, and as you stated, with regard to, to water and sewer, and, you know, you are served by Pinellas County, so Pinellas County will have to confirm that sewer and water are available. Based on my research of other projects in the area, I'd Based on my research of other projects in the area, I don't think that there, my understanding is that there's no concern with regard to capacity for either of those, water or sewer. With regard to stormwater, that's not handled on a citywide basis. That's handled to determine concurrency on each site, so each site and each phase, as it's developed, will have to show that it meets the stormwater management regulations, will be required to get a permit from the city and a permit from SWIMUD, Southwest Water Management District, and if there's any discharge into the DOT road, you know, approval from them as well. And then recreation, again, that is a local issue. You would confirm that through your site plan process to whether or not there's adequate public parks, tennis courts, basketball courts, and you know, my limited knowledge, not as, I'm not as knowledgeable as you all are about your city, but I believe that you are well within, in fact, probably exceed, all of your recreational requirements for your comp plan. But you're correct that each one of those will be reviewed at each, when each building permit is submitted for each phase of the project. The project would have to be determined concurrent by the city staff before it could go forward.
Do you have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Cindy, with regards to the capacity for water and sewer, your team will have to be responsible for determining whether or not there is capacity for water, sewer, and fire.
Yes, sir.
So it's not, it's not the city's responsibility to provide to you that, yes, the capacity is available? Is that correct?
You're correct, and if I misspoke, I didn't mean to convey that. What I was trying to explain was that our application, our team, will have to show that the water and sewer are available, that Pinellas County can provide sewer, wastewater capacity and water capacity, and then we provide that data, very detailed engineering data, to the city, who then reviews it when they review our site plan, but we're responsible for proving up to you that we do comply with those requirements.
As far as parking, you, for hotel use, what sort of parking are you providing for retail?
I'm going to ask Tim to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
For the various uses, the requirements are two parking spaces per condominium unit, one parking space per hotel room, one parking space for every two boat slips in the marina. For the retail, it is three parking spaces for every two thousand square feet of retail, and for the restaurant use, it's one parking space for every four hotel, restaurant seats. So we made some assumptions about the, or we've designated of the fifty thousand square feet of commercial space, I believe we have fifteen thousand square feet of restaurant and thirty-five thousand square feet of retail. Since the restaurants aren't fully designed, I've done a number of restaurants over the years, so I've used some good averages. Basically, it turns out to eight parking spaces per thousand square feet of restaurant space, based on a standard restaurant would comply, but that would have to be verified at the time of final design with each application. But in each project, we've met or exceeded the parking, those parking requirements that I just elucidated.
When you say you've exceeded, what sort of a?
Well, not by, not by a lot, to be honest, but for example, in the condominium buildings, condominium A has thirty-six condominium units, so it's required to have seventy-two parking spaces. We want to provide some guest parking, so we've got about an extra ten parking spaces in each of the two condominium buildings. Hotel A is pretty much right on, right on the minimum required by the code, but in Hotel B, we've got a few extra spaces because that's the largest of the retail spaces. What's, what we've not done, and although your code does provide for, is, and it's a very standard practice in mixed urban, mixed-use projects, to allow for a reduction in parking ratios when you have mixed use. The idea being that if you're staying at the hotel, you've got your car parked there for the hotel, well, you're not going to need another parking space if you go to one of the restaurants or one of the shops downstairs. Similarly, if you live in one of the condominium buildings, you're likely to just walk down to go to one of the, so some of the, the nature of mixed-use projects is you capture some of your own parking needs, but we've not, and even though that's provided for in your code, we've not tried to take advantage of any of the parking reductions that are allowed due to the mixed-use nature of the project. But empirical evidence shows that there would often be a ten to thirty percent reduction in parking demand on mixed-use projects like this.
Generally speaking, and you're providing like three spaces per two thousand for retail?
That's what's in the code, so, I mean, so we've got that, which is, compared to some other municipalities, is relatively light, but what makes up for it is the restaurant parking ratios are actually quite a bit more than I'm used to seeing in most municipalities, so in my opinion, it sort of blends out nicely between the restaurant and retail use.
Actually, eight, and I don't mean to be taking up the time here, but eight is pretty, pretty low, in other words, you know, seven, seven, eight, and Mr. Pergolisi is involved with a whole bunch of restaurants, you know, who work with. Is there any possibility that maybe, you know, we're trying to move forward, of course, with this review, but would you be able to provide additional parking spaces in the future if it's needed?
I mean, that's, you know, it's an issue of just a case-by-case analysis. You're probably, I think you're probably referring more to the two hotel buildings or the two commercial buildings?
At, you know, item one, you know, one use at a time, you know, typically speaking for retail, we're used to five per thousand. Now, you're providing one point five per thousand. I mean, that's like three times less for retail.
Not in, I mean, five per thousand is, would be common like in a Tyrone mall, a suburban mall. In urban districts, I mean, I'll give you, for example, in downtown St. Petersburg, we typically provide two per thousand for retail and two per thousand for restaurant.
That's correct. However, you'd be looking at somebody building a parking garage there.
We, and we're building parking garages here.
You know, we're not, well, this parking garage, in other words, that particular parking garage in St. Pete would be subject for public, but here.
And we also have approximately thirty to forty on-street parking spaces on Madeira Way that, again, aren't dedicated to this project, but will be, we anticipate being captured and used largely by the visitors to the retail shops and businesses, not just ours, but also the existing post office, of course.
Okay. Now, as far as PD, we're looking at PD plans, you know, PD, what sort of a setback are we looking at when it comes to PD, and what sort of a, you know, open space and appropriate surface ratio are we looking for?
The PD doesn't establish setbacks, and it doesn't establish an open space percentage. There is an ISR, which I can look up, it's different in each of those districts, if I recall, but the PD, the beauty of the PD for both the developer and for the city is that you can weigh the entire design and the overall project together, so.
Yes.
No prescribed setbacks.
So you're not using any sort of a code to establish a PD plan, in other words?
There is nothing in your code that prescribes that, so what it says is, there's no specific mix of uses, you can make up your own project as you go along.
Yes.
And, you know, obviously, you don't just throw something on the table. I think you can see from Mr. Clemens' design that he very carefully considered the setbacks for all of those buildings, where it's more urban, you know, in, on Madeira Way, where you have the hotels and the restaurant and the retail. You want them to be close to the street, and you want to have that real urban feel along Madeira Way, although he has expanded the separation. Along the Causeway, where you have the two condo buildings, they are set back a generous amount, and there's a huge separation between the nearest condominiums on the south side and the proposed condominiums that we're building. And again, that with the new location of the marina at the very eastern edge of the site, again, it kind of maintains or extends that open space feel that you have from the Causeway, so it feels like that open space is extending all the way down to the first condo. So, again, it's up to you to review that planned development plan and make a decision whether you think it complies with the standards of the special area plan and the design guidelines that you have in front of you, but there are no numerical standards to engage against except for the density, which we've shown that we meet the density for the residential and for the hotel and the FAR for the commercial.
And the reason I said that, I'm sorry, because you alluded to some code, you know, you said you are meeting some code requirements early on. I just wanted to put it out for record that.
We were referring to parking, and I want to add one thing too, to Tim's thing. I've worked in urban areas for my entire career in, you know, the southwest portion of Florida, and the fact that we have not relied on any shared parking, shared parking is what Tim was referring to, where you come and park once, and you're going to go a couple of the retail shops, and you're going to have dinner, and then maybe you go to, you know, an after-dinner drink somewhere, you know, within that Madeira Way area. That's three different trips in three different cars, but there's only one person and, or, you know, one couple in one car. So we have not accounted for that. We've been very conservative in complying with what the city's codes are for parking, but there is a recognition that if you build this, if this gets built as designed, a couple things are going to happen. People from all around the area are going to walk, number one. People that are across on Gulf Boulevard are going to walk over there rather than get in their car and drive a block. And you have shared parking among the people that are living in the condominiums, the condos on top of the hotel, and the guests in the hotel. Clearly, the guests in the hotel, that's one car that's already there, and they're going to use all the facilities and all the activities within that area. So if that's what Tim was referring to, very common in every jurisdiction we work to allow for shared parking and to allow reduction, and we're not asking for that. We're complying with the parking as if each one were standalone, which they are clearly not, and it is, and it's, it's not a suburban-style development. I mean, this is an urban town scale that you are desiring in your special area plan, and that's what we're envisioning to create.
I'd like to make a really important part of the point about the setbacks, though. So even though there's no prescribed setbacks within, for the planned development, we ourselves have prescribed setbacks within the development agreement. So for each parcel, we've shown minimum dimensions from the adjacent streets, from the marina or from the, from the seawall, distances between buildings, so when and if the development agreement is approved, there will now be setbacks established for this, so we are locking ourselves in to standards. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands, it's not like we're allowed to do whatever we want once this development agreement is set. We are creating, we're proposing for your review and approval, a series of setbacks for each parcel, and that's, you know, so we've, we've looked at what the more Euclidean zoning requires, and that's been our guide where appropriate, but in a couple places like Madeira Way, we really wanted to create a strong sense of place on that street, you know, a more pedestrian character, for example, but in some cases, we actually set, we, we volunteered, because we created that walkway across the marina, we actually have a larger-than minimum setback off the intercoastal waterway, for example.
What sort of a buffer are we providing for the marina as far as pavement versus property line?
Basically, again, as I mentioned earlier, there's a two-foot seawall, then there's the eight-foot walkway, then there's a small landscape strip that was, I think it's five or six feet, that goes with the walkway, and then there's the backyard of the condominium building, which is.
Sorry, I'm just basically driving on One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, looking at the marina.
Oh, just the marina itself?
Yes.
From east to west?
From east to west, yes. So what sort of a buffer are you providing for that pavement, the marina?
Yeah, from the Causeway District to Condo A, what's the distance? Is that what you're asking?
The pavement, pavement, the parking lot for the.
Parking lot, oh, I see. So, okay, from One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, we have a green strip, then the twelve-foot pedestrian walkway, then another green strip, and then the parking lot. I'm sorry, I don't remember the total width of the two green spaces plus the twelve-foot. I think it's approximately thirty feet, but I, but I don't have it right in my head.
And just one other question, and actually, it's not a question, but it looked like you covered some of the parking issues and, or the parkits, parking strategies on page eight here from the development plan.
Correct.
Okay. And I didn't know if the vice mayor had seen that or not.
Before you go, Mr. Clemens, I read an article this morning in the Wall Street Journal that Buffalo, I believe it was, was the first city in the country that was loosening or even getting rid of its parking regulations.
Actually, it, I, I look at this a lot in the journals and the newspapers. It's not the first, it's the latest. There's actually a real wave of going through the country of, in certain select urban locations where appropriate. Portland, Oregon was one of the first to, and about a third of the city get rid of residential requirements, and what they've shown is that they've actually reduced the cost of building apartment buildings and condominium buildings by about thirty thousand dollars per unit and increased the amount of redevelopment investment that's happened in neighborhoods that hadn't seen new investment in years. So it's, you know, it's not appropriate everywhere, but when you're trying to create sort of walkable pedestrian districts, actually, too much parking can be, in fact, as bad as too little.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm not sure who's best to answer my question. Make sure I have it correct. The triangle that's at One Hundred and Fiftieth and Gulf Boulevard is maintained by the city, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And who's, who would maintain the walkway trails on the water side as well as on One Hundred and Fiftieth?
I'm told by Ms. Wells that it's the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, there was a request to receive into evidence the analysis that was done by Ms. Tera Peany, and so it's appropriate this time for you to determine whether or not you're going to receive that into evidence.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Kate, do you have anything else?
Yes, Tom, thank you. Just to wrap up, in addition to the analysis prepared by Cindy Tera Peany, the transportation analysis by Mr. Pergolisi and the presentation by Mr. Clemens, I want to make sure that those are included in the record of tonight's hearing.
Yes.
And lastly, that each member of our consulting team was accepted as an expert witness in their respective areas of experience.
Yes.
Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
Staff?
Yeah, staff presentation through Mr. Healy. I'll need to talk loudly. Mayor Palladino, members of the commission, my name is Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano and Associates here tonight in the capacity of assisting your staff and preparing the staff report that is in your agenda package. It's about seventeen pages long. You've already heard lengthy and detailed testimony about the project, about its differences with the previous project that was approved in June under ordinance twenty sixteen oh one, and I'll try and be mercifully brief and summarize the key points in my staff report. They are really three. One, to describe to you the plan itself, which Mr. Clemens, Ms. Tera Peany have done in detail. I won't repeat that. I think you have a good sense of what the plan is. We do recite that in our staff report and summarize it. It is consistent with what you've heard from the applicant relative to the combination of the two hotels, the two condominium buildings, and the marina. I would emphasize, I guess, the second main point I would make is the distinction between the previous plan and the plan that's in front of you tonight. There are a number of things that have changed and some things that haven't, both of which are pertinent to your consideration. With respect to the changed number of hotel rooms, there are simply said one hundred and fourteen fewer temporary lodging or hotel rooms in the plan that's in front of you tonight under ordinance twenty seventeen oh one as opposed to the previous plan. The number of condominium units remains the same at ninety. They have been distributed differently, as Mr. Clemens pointed out. There are two different sizes to the condominium buildings that respect the difference in their location as between the Causeway Subdistrict and the Commercial Core District, with ten of those units now being placed on the top floor of Hotel B. The commercial area has been expanded slightly from fifty thousand square feet to fifty-three thousand square feet, and that is comprised, as you were told by the applicant, of some thirty thousand square feet of retail, fifteen thousand square feet approximately in restaurant space, and an eight thousand square foot marina. One of the main differences in the scale of the buildings is the reduction in building height, the two hotels having been reduced by three stories from eleven to eight, and the two condominium structures reduced by two stories from eight to six. So the scale and the density, intensity of the project have been revised downward and do comport essentially with the original standards and provisions of the 2009 special area plan, do not, as the applicant stated, take advantage of some of the amendments that were made in 2014 that would allow for additive or blended density. One of the important notations, though, with respect to what has changed or not changed is that in spite of the reduced size and scale of the project, all of the important design and public interest components that we pushed for originally have been retained, and they include, as has been described to you, the walkway and landscaping along One Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, public access to the marina and waterway, a pedestrian plaza and open space at One Hundred and Fifty in Gulf Boulevard, and a pedestrian overpass over Gulf Boulevard, as well as the transportation improvements described in Mr. Pergolisi's report to address traffic impacts. So while the size and the scale of the project have been reduced, the important public components have been retained, and we think that's very important to. have been retained, and we think that's very important to the commission's consideration. You've heard great length and detail the analysis that the applicant has gone through with respect to its compliance with the comprehensive plan, the special area plan, and the land development regulations. I will just highlight those for you because those are the considerations that the commission needs to take into account when reaching its decision. And they are, first of all, contained in Section 110-391 of the Land Development Code, and there are five specific criteria listed there for the commission to consider. Ms. Terapany went through those in some detail. I won't elaborate on them. They are contained in pages 5 through 16 of our staff report, and I can touch on any one of those in particular that the commission wants to go back to. They deal with consistency with the comprehensive plan, with land-use compatibility, with the adequacy of public facilities, which you've already had some discussion about, about the public interest being served and consistency with the land development regulations. Suffices to say that our staff review has found in each and every instance with respect to those five criteria that they do comply with the requirements as set forth in Section Those are considerations that were looked at and evaluated by your planning commission as well, and I'll get to their recommendation in a moment. But in addition to those, there's a whole series of additional considerations that, when it comes to the commission, that you are tasked with looking at. And they are both general and detailed design considerations, to the extent that they are applicable, and they are contained in Section 110-393. And the first set of those lists a series of actually 12 separate considerations. We've gone through each separate one of those on pages 8 through 13 in the staff report. I won't go through each one of them individually, but we have evaluated them. I explained what, in our interpretation, they mean relative to this specific project and how it applies to the special area plan and your comprehensive plan, as well as the regulations. And found that all of those respective criteria have been adequately addressed and are consistent with the provisions and the policies in your plan and code. There are an additional 11 planned considerations, so-called design factors, to be evaluated. All of them don't apply in any given instance, but we've gone through all 11, and those are on pages 13 through 16 of the staff report, and deal with some of the very specifics that you've questioned about height and setback and scale and relationship between open space and parking and the components of the project-specific that is the heart and soul of planned development. That's what this is all about, allowing you to judge for yourselves whether it meets the intent of that special area plan with regard to the specifics set forth in the design of this project. Our conclusion, having gone through each and every one of those criteria, is that the rezoning application and the accompanying plan comport and are consistent with each of the applicable criteria. We have noted on page 16 of our staff report initially that there were five, I'll call them minor editorial changes that were required, that we identified, and would point out to you that the last two pages of your agenda packet include the response from the applicant through Mr. Scott Brainard that made those changes to the project data sheet. They were minor, they're not substantive, I can go through each one, but we pointed out really editorial or simply minor wording changes that needed to be addressed. They have been, we've reviewed those, and they have been adjusted to meet with our satisfaction relative to the requirements of the project. All of that is to get to on page 17, our recommendation as your staff to you. And there are two parts to that. The planning commission recommendation, after public hearing on December 12th unanimously recommended to the commission that the rezoning application, the corresponding plan, and after first reading on the development agreement, be recommended to the commission for approval. Our staff recommendation, independent of that, is that we recommend approval of ordinance 201701 to amend the zoning designation on the subject property from PD Plan Development to Plan Development, subject to three conditions. That the rezoning is subject to, and based upon approval by the board at this meeting, of the site concept plan as provided for in the development agreement, which you will consider at the second public hearing and approve in concert with the rezoning if you choose to do so. The rezoning is also subject to the provisions contained in the development agreement, which the planning commission has reviewed and recommended to you, which will be set for separate public hearing and consideration at the second reading for the rezoning ordinance. And it is subject to approval of that development agreement that articulates all of the particular agreements and conditions by which the plan would be approved, if indeed it is. And secondly, and importantly, all of this is subject to the second final reading of the ordinance and the corresponding development agreement, which, as Mr. Trask mentioned earlier, is scheduled for consideration on February 14, 2017. So that date has been identified and would be the second of the required two public hearings on the development agreement. I know I've been brief and summarized a lot of information, but you've heard it in some considerable detail before that. I'll be glad to go back, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, and try and answer any questions you have about any of those particulars.
Commission? Actually, say, manager, just one, and it really, it probably pertains to this in the long run, how you're looking at everything, if this project is, does move along, would be looking at the building department and how the building department, with the building department at its size, build a handle projects doing like this with schedules of pores of maybe, I know most big projects I've ever been on is a pore a week on, per floor. I mean, is there, what kind of, what kind of staff, you know, what would the city need to do to keep up with something like this?
I don't wanna speak for the building official, 'cause he's not here tonight, but I think due to the staging of how these projects are going to be put into play, I don't think it'd be significant. Plus, most of the fees are borne by the user, so if we did have to contract out a couple of inspections here or there, that would be a financial burden to us. But since this is being phased in, we've dealt with Publix, we've dealt with SLICE, you know, we've dealt with some developments. One building staggered throughout the process is not gonna, not gonna shut down the building department by any means, so we'd be able to handle it administratively if that's the answer you're looking for.
And actually, just as I know we're kinda coming to the bum this, and actually, it's for the developer, and also being the construction industry for years before other adventures, the staging areas for the projects, I mean, so they do not disrupt traffic or flow of anything going on in the city? What is the developer's thoughts on that, or what are their plans?
Not that that was our prime consideration in developing the master plan, but we have actually discussed that. Adjacent to each building is a laydown area. So, for example, Hotel B has the triangular park, which during construction, that would be used as the staging area for the construction of that building, with the park then being developed near the end of the construction. And once the, once the shell is up at a building like that, especially with a parking garage, it's very common for the developer, for the contractor, to move his staging areas into the bottom floor of the parking garage. So, again, and then if you look between Hotel A and condominium B, there's a, again, an equal-sized area between the two condominium buildings, and then actually between Condo A and the marina. So there's actually nice laydown areas for each of the project for staging and constructing the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to add at the end, if I may. Because I abbreviated a lot of the content in my staff report, I would ask the commission to accept that into evidence as well, the complete staff report.
Yes.
Thank you. No other commission questions, we can go ahead and move on to those persons that filed affected person notices. The first would be John Lippa. He filed his on November 29th at 9:33 a.m.
I'll do the preamble. I'm gonna talk to you about three things this evening. One, a historical retrospective of various ordinances the city has passed over the last 15 years, and how it helped me understand what the hell is going on. And two, an overview, my overview, of what Mr. Kearns has proposed. And three, what's been near and dear to my heart since this process started, the need for some traffic modulation devices along 150th Avenue where we live. So to begin with, good evening. My name is John Lippa. I live on 399 150th Avenue. I'm a resident of the city, and I've spoken to you several times from this podium. I'm speaking to you this evening not only as for myself, but as a vice president of the Madeira Cove condominium on 150th Avenue, as well as other people who live on 150th Avenue, who I've met with several times. I am not a traffic consultant, I'm not a planning consultant, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a developer. What I am is a retired business executive. Go ahead, Nick. Business executive with an MBA, with 30 years of experience, working for Fortune 50 corporations, analyzing business plans and negotiating labor agreements for firms such as General Electric, Lockheed Martin, and General Dynamics. I've also chaired for 12 years the North Adams, Massachusetts Redevelopment Authority, an organization like your planning commission, and I chaired that for a dozen years. And then in addition, I chaired for eight years the Massachusetts Workforce Board Association. In addition, I've had 12 years of living on 150th Avenue, dealing with traffic and pedestrian I'm aware in this litigious environment, quasi-judicial process, parties may assert the right to challenge some or all of what I'm planning to say this evening. Not because it doesn't make sense, not because it isn't factual, but because what I say, it'll be my opinion. I realize in this process, opinions can be challenged unless the testifier meets certain legal criteria for technical competence. I think I'm competent, and I think I'm credible, but I don't have, and I'll tell you upfront, I'm not a technical competent person in the legal definition, as Ms. Wells would say. So I'm telling you, it's my personal opinion, and it's not offering, I'm not offering it as an expert opinion. All that said, I think it's important that I share with you what I know, what I feel, and what I believe, in the hopes that it will help you and others better understand this project and how we can get our city, who's two miles wide, without that smile anymore. We wanna get that smile back. So I spent a lot of time over the last several months working with city staff, trying to understand the comprehensive plan and the various amendments over the years. And if you don't, if you just bear with me, I'd be able to boil it down to one slide, which helped me, maybe it'll help you, and maybe it'll help the people here and at home better understand what we're adding. So this all began back in 2001, when the city, the people sitting in your seats decided to develop the town center, and really wanted to have a plan that was actionable for the east side of the city, or the north side of the city. And over the years, 2005, '07, '09, and '14, the city took various enabling actions to bring the 2001 concept into reality by providing tools that the city could use within this comprehensive plan to entice development. In 2005, you created the Plan Development Zoning District. Still, nothing happened. 2007, the city enhanced the plan and added the planned mixed-use redevelopment. Still, nobody got excited about developing. 2009, the city said, well, you know, you got mixed uses, but now let's add mixed, multiple properties, and then review it and make it consistent with the Pinellas County area rules. And the city said, let's all do all that, and let's make this, make anything that's involving multiple properties part of the planned zoning review process, and still, nothing happened. 2014, after the five-year review cycle, a resort facility high was adopted and more formalized language was put into the program to define development requirement, agreement requirements, and required that any mixed-use development be rezoned as a PD. Well, we all know what happened after the 2014 amendment. You got a proposal. You finally got a developers, got excited, and the city had something to work with. And what you heard in the spring caused, you know, a lot of angst within the, within the community. People got, thought it was a little too big, a little too robust, and they were questioning how it all happened. And that's why I prepared this chart for myself. I said, was this all the result of some dastardly deed by devious people, or was this some sane, thought-out process? And it looks to me that there was a concept that started back 15 years ago, 16 years ago, in 2001, continued to be enhanced over the years. We finally got some people to put some money up to develop things, and since then, our smile has left, and people got, and it got very personal, which bothered me, 'cause I was a human resource guy, and, you know, interpersonal relationships always were important to me. But since I spoke to you in the spring, much has transpired, I'm happy to say. Developers being wise people, spend a lot of time listening and evaluating. I know, because I spent a lot of time with them, especially Mr. Kearns. Mr. Kearns and Mr. Holton told me they were willing to modify their projects and build something that would be responsive to the concerns they heard, but that had to work for them, i.e. compromise. On October 10th, Mr. Kearns, Mr. Holton called myself and Larry Roloff's and asked us, asked to meet with us. They said they wanted to share with us their redesign thoughts. So we met with them, and we said, hey, no, we like what we see, the light we heard, but they needed to show us how their scaled-down plan complied with the 2009 SAPPD criteria, because that's what our neighbors were concerned about, and that's what we heard through other people throughout the city, get it back to 2009. Well, five weeks transpired since that meeting on October 10th, and we were called again back to a meeting. And we were, the plans we were shown then were substantially the same plans you were exposed to this evening by Mr. Kearns and his staff. And here's my assessment of what those were. He dropped the height of the hotel buildings by 27 percent, and he's committed to go into a maximum of, I think, was it 90, have they got it right, 90 feet? 80 feet? 90 feet. And he lowered the number of hotel rooms from 11 to 8, and the condos from 8 to 6. He cut the number of hotel rooms by 27 percent. He lowered the number of daily vehicle trips by 24 percent. He moved some condos around to fit into the site plan. He shifted some condos over to Hotel B, and he's redesigned the facade of Hotel B, and so there's more views of the sky, and avoided the Madeira Way Canyon look. And I could tell you that Madeira Way Canyon look, his first public meeting, in the room across the way, my wife, Bonnie, went up to Mr. Kearns and says, it looks like a canyon. And he listened, and he worked it, worked it to try to resolve her issue. So I appreciate that. And then he had a lot of rounds of public meetings and reviews, and he's talked not only to me and Larry, but to others. So he tried to make some responsive changes. So before, we had tall buildings with the canyon effect, now we got little shorter buildings. We had some public space, and the city's gonna determine that final design over there. But we got a nice little view of venue over there now in the city for some, from some food and some beverage service close to the beach. Or we can stay where we were, and this what it was before the 2014, and everybody got excited after the plan development. We all can say, I think, whether we like the height of the buildings or not, that area needs a little love, and the developers stepped forward and showed some love there with the concept. So we still wanted to see, you know, put pencil to paper to make sure that they were compliant with 2000- compliant with two thousand and nine, so we developed two tables, one for Madeira Way and one for one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, and with the various data points to show that what was allowed under the two thousand and nine SAP PD and what's being proposed. And in each case, with each of those criteria, he has met, he believes he has met the two thousand and nine criteria. It's up to you and to concur with that, because it's not, it's only my opinion. And in, and on one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, again, he's met the allowed criteria. Now, as hard, as, as much as I think, in my opinion, that he has, what he's proposing meets the criteria, there's others still who feel that building heights are not permissive within the two thousand and nine SAP criteria, because they look and see the Marriott Hotel, and why can that only be that height, and these buildings can be this height? I cannot explain that, because I'm not an expert, but I'm sure, Bill, you've got somebody on your staff that could explain that. So, you want to do that now?
Not now. You make your presentation.
Okay. So, please cover that part, and, which brings me to the third part of my talk, was the issue about traffic safety. Now, way back when, when this development was first proposed, we knew then that the number of cars are going to cause a major problem, because we have a problem now. And with the new condos going directly across from where our entrance on one hundred and fiftieth Avenue is, we could see a problem getting in and out. And talking with Mr. Carnes, he's developed, and it's in your plan, I think it's on page ten, paragraph nine dot one-one, which talks about three, three stools to address the traffic and pedestrian safety concern. One, a no turn on red at a hundred, at Gulf Boulevard, one hundred and fiftieth, working with the appropriate authorities to modify the opening and closing of the bridge. And three, work with FDOT to see if we can get a traffic light on one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, so that there's some stop and go within the east-west traffic, so people coming from the north and the south can get in and out of the flow of traffic. I know this is probably beyond your purview, but I would appreciate if the Board of Commissioners could work with us and Mr. Carnes and Mr. Holton, because we're all in agreement that we need some sort of device there, and along with those other two elements we talked about. The city manager, Mr. Carnes, and I met with the regional director of FDOT. We know that they would prefer this movement traffic east-west. We know we don't have enough criteria to meet the warrants that would, they would require. And if you recall, back in the spring, the three condos, Boca Vista, Snug Harbor, Madeira Cove, came to you and said, we're willing to allow each one of us to work, go through other, each other's property, so you could have a common access point, because that's how important it is. We don't have to talk about that now, because senior thoughts are coming in the fore. But we need the commission, and we need the city to step forth in saying, however paragraph nine point nine is finalized, either it is the way it is now, or where it may be modified through future discussions with FDOT, we need to have a common voice, because this is going to have a political resolution to it. You know, we've got to get some people besides you, Mr. Mayor, as powerful as you are, we got to get somebody higher up in FDOT to make things happen. And we need you and the citizens of Madeira Beach to join the support chorus for these, for these initiatives. And we need the, but people know, people need to let Senator Brandy's know, or State Representative Russo know, and State Representative Peters know, that this is important, and we're all in favor. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
I think, I know I've had a brief discussion with you on this, and I know that you've had a discussion with some other people on, far as representation, on getting some lights, and I think I brought into the fold that Representative Peters now is working with us, with Senator Latvala. And where Pinellas County is right now, I think we have a very strong voice up in Tallahassee far as getting some things done. So I see this going, pretty much going forward. I'd hope to hear from the developers on this, not on the political end, but on the financial end of being able to take care of these obligations. I think the political end, we can get this done, getting permitted.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks.
Next is Larry Roloffs.
Good evening. We're almost through this. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Larry Roloffs. I live at three ninety-nine, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, Madeira Beach. Because of the nature of testimonies for the record, I must repeat some of the information that you have heard from me before. So again, I would like to start by telling you a little bit about myself. My credentials are that I have college degrees in electrical engineering, physics, and a master's degree in business management. I worked for my country for thirty-five years at the National Security Agency, and another ten years at an engineering consulting firm. I also own thirty-three percent of a small electrical company. At NSA, I managed research and development and production of secure military equipments, and they were deployed worldwide through our military services, totaling well over one billion dollars. I received many awards for my work, one being a Presidential Unit Citation for my work in Desert Storm Iraq. I was presented this award by General Colin Powell, who is then Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. I also have been President of Madeira Cove Condominiums for the past twelve years. As John stated in his talk, I realize in this quasi-judicial process, opinions can be challenged unless testifiers meet certain legal thresholds for technical competence. However, I must admit that this quasi-judicial stamp that has been placed on both developments has confused me, and I'm sure others. For example, when I am finished and sit down, do I have the right to challenge a statement made by any member of the Board of Commissioners or the developer teams? So as far as I have witnessed in these proceedings, when I sit down, I have no comment or no right to make a comment regarding any questions or comments that are made that I might not agree with. Additionally, I have been told that I cannot talk to my elected official about these developments that will be on my street prior to them receiving the developer's package. Then my representative approves this package before I have a chance to talk to him or her. So how can my elected representative represent my views and those of their other constituents? The manner in which this quasi-judicial process has been executed seems anti-American to me. Okay, enough of my personal feelings. I come before you today to further enhance and support John's testimony regarding the efforts we have already taken, that we hope will lead to agreements between all affected parties. My particular role has been to generate and distribute numerous emails and sit at the head of meetings to the owners at Madeira Cove. I've also met with the Holton and Carnes teams on numerous occasions, as John already testified, to understand their points of view. I've also met with members of Boca Vista and Snug Harbor, who share access to one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, to understand their concerns. At a recent Madeira Cove Board of Directors meeting, we had an overflowing crowd of owners jamming our clubhouse with one particular agenda item, the Holiday Isles and Town Center Development Projects. Our normal meetings last less than an hour, however, this meeting went on for over two hours. The main purpose was to discuss the owner's concerns regarding traffic and pedestrian safety. The overwhelming concern of the residents was the safety of entering and exiting one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. They repeated over and over again of their fear of getting in and out of our driveway without getting into an accident, and how long it will take to get in and out with the increases in traffic. I will show you a situation a person may face when attempting to exit Madeira Cove's If I can figure this out. I think I got yours. No, I got it. I'm an electrical engineer, eh? There we go. Right. Is it up here? All right, what I'm going to talk about is this intersection right here. This is Madeira Cove, coming up from south to north. This is the entrance to condos A and B on the north side of one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. Now, what you're going to see here is a person coming out of Madeira Cove's driveway. And I've put numbers on the vehicles. The vehicles going eastbound are vehicles one in one lane and two in the other lane. The vehicles going westbound are three and four. That traffic there has been estimated to increase by at least five thousand vehicles a day. Then we have a new left-turn lane that's been in the plan to develop right here, so that people coming eastbound on one hundred and fifty Avenue can turn into condos A and B. The one that already exists is vehicle six, who are coming westbound on one hundred and fiftieth Avenue and turning into Madeira Cove. Now, let's add to that vehicle seven coming south out of the driveway entrance of condos A and B. Then we have the sidewalks, eight and nine, where you have pedestrians and bicycles. So here you are, coming out of Madeira Cove, and you have nine scenarios to hopefully make it out alive. So I just wanted to bring this up to your attention as I make further points about this particular intersection. Thank you. Now you can turn around and face me. If the traffic signal at Madeira Way is removed, as has been proposed, and it's critical that one be installed at three ninety-nine, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, which I showed on that figure, this traffic signal would prevent the scenarios I described in the picture I presented. It also will provide a break in traffic flow, so that six condominium communities along one hundred and fiftieth Avenue can get in or out. These communities are Madeira Cove, Boca Vista, Snug Harbor, and the new Holiday Isles condo building, which are all on the south side of one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, plus the two Town Center condominium buildings on the north side. Holiday Isles will also have a hotel and restaurant on the south side. We are talking about over four hundred residents attempting to access one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. And it's critical that all parties involved understand the impact that is coming, and what can be done to survive our ingress and egress of the condo communities, hotels on both sides of one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. If we don't get a traffic signal at three hundred, three ninety-nine, one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, then traffic accidents and pedestrian deaths will be a certainty. Our area is listed as the seventh most deadly area in the nation for pedestrian deaths. Why should FDOT wait for those events to happen in order to meet their warrant requirements for a traffic signal, when they can do it right from the start? We need all parties from City Hall, the two developers, and all the residents along one hundred and fiftieth Avenue to work as one voice to FDOT. In meeting with the two developers, I must say, they have been most accommodating in their attempts to satisfy opposing citizens' views. They have redesigned their projects significantly, and I and many of our owners in Madeira Cove are very happy with those design changes, and believe it will enhance our city of Madeira Beach if we can solve the traffic concerns. I would ask that you at least recognize my request by mentioning it during your discussions. In the past, no commissioner member has made any comment addressing the citizens' concerns during their discussions, when we take the time and effort to come before you. It can be very frustrating to go to this effort and then sit down, and while you make no comment, but rather just to prove that the developments are presented. I now ask you to at least consider such a request on behalf of the many residents that live along one hundred and fiftieth Avenue, that we must depend on a traffic light to stop the traffic flow, so they can access one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. In closing, it would be my hope that all of the affected residents along one hundred and fiftieth Avenue and others throughout our city work together as a team to achieve a safe, thorough pair, thorough fare along one hundred and fiftieth Avenue. Rather than fighting the developments, we need to work as a team to get the best possible outcome. Wouldn't it be something if people entering our city over the Tom Stewart Causeway Bridge would see a beautiful entrance to our city that was lined with palm trees on both sides, buried utility lines, wide sidewalks to safely accommodate pedestrians, whether they are walking or on bicycles, would become the most beautiful entrance of all the barrier island cities? Thank you very much for your time. Any questions? Okay.
Do I need to allow that? Or since we've, we've, we've already, our testimony's been approved. Yeah, he just read it word for word, I think, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay. Next is William Gay.
I think I'll probably have to study, struggle with the technology also.
Yeah, Nick, they need your help again.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Gay. I live in Snug Harbor on the Tom Stewart Causeway, and I've spoken before this group before. Whoosh happens to live in the same building that I live in. My background is in public sector management consulting at the local state level, and also at the federal level. Spent thirty years working with sometimes the Department of Justice, the National Institute of Justice, I'm published by the International City Management Association, National League of Cities, and I've worked in Florida at the county and at the city level. I've been a resident here since two thousand and six. We moved into Snug Harbor, and we're very, very pleased to move into the neighborhood. We said, boy, this is an ideal situation. We have some small-town life here. We have a very nice kind of lush setting over there. Our buildings were built and Uh, our buildings were built, and when I say our buildings, I mean Snug Harbor, uh, Boca Vista, and also Madeira Cove were built, um, oh, fifteen to twenty years ago. And at that time, when development took place here, it was usually on large lots, uh, pretty lush ground. So you have, um, uh, you have grass, you have trees, and a pretty, pretty nice place to live. Uh, we also had good access to the downtown area here. You could walk the downtown, walk the city hall, the library, and to the beaches. So this was really a great place for us to, uh, to relocate. Uh, when we moved here, things were, uh, were starting to pick up again, and the expectation was that perhaps, uh, there'd be some redevelopment in the downtown area. The downtown area, as you know, is, is what I would call shabby, and it's certainly in need of a lot of refurbishment, and that's what these projects have been done, designed to do. Uh, the mayor and the city manager came by very often in December, visited our building when we had some of our social functions, and they were pretty excited that two thousand thirteen, fourteen period when the Marriott was going in. Uh, the Marriott is basically four levels of hotel rooms over one level of parking. Uh, they were pretty pleased with that, and they said, "This is the kind of development that we would like to see, you know, in the rest of Madeira Beach here, along the Causeway and in the downtown area." I guess what surprised us is when the development plans, uh, finally reached fruition last year, we found that, you know, the Marriott idea of some kind of limited development had pretty much been dropped, and we wound up with these ten and eleven-story buildings, uh, that were surrounding us on both the east and the north side. Uh, these were buildings that were much higher than we had anticipated. Uh, we're pro-development, but we don't want over-development. Uh, that's been our major concern. Uh, when you looked at these developments, what was surprising to us also was that all the restrictions on setbacks had pretty much been disposed of. Uh, they were building buildings from sidewalk to sidewalk or sidewalk to, uh, to seawall, in some cases from seawall to seawall. Uh, the way that the buildings were structured and the size of the buildings meant that there was no, no longer a visible line to the bay, Boca Seagave, uh, to the east, and there was a limited visibility coming across, um, one-hundred-and-fiftieth Avenue, the Tom Stewart Causeway. So this was a great shock to us. We said, this is not what we expected. I guess the other thing, and I think Larry has alluded to some of this, the process that was used to, uh, to bring this about. Uh, things were done very quickly. They were being rushed through. They were using a quasi-judicial process. That all this development took place between the developers and the city with very, very, I would say, no input from citizens themselves. It was almost like a done deal. It was done over the Christmas period to rush these things through. Uh, some of that was slowed down because I think there's some electrical problems in the building. And we said, boy, this is not what we were, this is not what we bought when we moved in here. This is not what we expected. This had gone further than any of our expectations in terms of what development would take a look, what, what development looked like. Uh, what I'd like to do today, it's, uh, it's a fairly straightforward presentation, not very much to it. Uh, it's something that's not been raised by any of the development group. It's not been an issue that's been raised by, uh, any of the city personnel or the staff personnel or your consultants. Uh, this is some information that's taken from the, uh, uh, the comprehensive plan, the future land use category section, and it deals with, uh, the level of height that can be, uh, constructed in the special area plan area and also the, uh, FAR, the floor area ratio for the buildings that would be built here. And this, this is pretty specific. Uh, on the Causeway District, uh, the limitation is, uh, three stories of construction over the base flood elevation. And that's, um, that's a pretty tight restriction. Uh, the building I live in is, uh, you know, four levels over, um, base flood elevation. And usually that first level is, is where the garages are. Um, uh, the plan allows for mixed-use development, which means you can, uh, put together, uh, some commercial space and residential space and hotel space on the same plot of land. Uh, the FAR deals with the floor area ratio, which is a ratio of the building structure size to a parcel size. Um, the current proposal, uh, from Mr. Carnes, uh, includes buildings in each district, that is, the Causeway District and the Commercial Core. And, uh, the current height limits in the, uh, comprehensive plan are designed to support low-rise development. So what I'd like to do is just briefly take a look at, um, how these standards have been applied in the, uh, in the development proposal. All right, so this is looking at the height standards. That's the number of floors of base, above the base floor elevation level in the buildings that are proposed by Mr. Carnes. Uh, the Commercial Core is more the area down towards, uh, Madeira Way. Uh, and the, uh, Causeway area is more up towards, um, uh, the park, the nine-eleven park. Uh, maximum height there is, uh, in both of those jurisdictions is three stories over the, uh, base flood elevation. And, uh, columns three, four, and five indicate how much has been proposed by the developers. Uh, for example, um, the Holiday, the Hotel A, which is going to be where the Bronze Lady is, uh, is seven floors rather than, uh, than, uh, two floors, three floors. Um, Hotel B, the Brown Boxer, comes in at eight floors. And the Causeway condos are, you know, six floors in height, substantially higher than what's contained in the, uh, the SAP plan, the SAP, SAP criteria. Uh, so if you look at the total stories permitted, there are sixteen permitted in the four buildings. Uh, the total stories proposed by the developer are twenty-seven in those four buildings. I guess our conclusion is that the plan includes sixty-eight percent more floors than the SAP permits. Uh, what's surprising to us at the planning department, uh, the consultant, uh, the city manager, the planning board failed to consider the SAP height requirements in vetting the developers' application. Uh, none of these questions were raised by anybody on the planning board when they met, uh, I guess, last month. Uh, none of this has been raised by any of the, uh, development people making presentations tonight. So the question we have is, you know, what is the deal with, um, uh, the height limitations that are in the SAP? Why has nobody addressed those? To me, this is the elephant in the room, and I don't know what the answer to the, uh, the elephant in the room is. That's one of the questions that we have, and I think it's something that this board, uh, has to grapple with. The second part of the, um, SAP deals with the floor area ratio specifications. And this is basically a ratio between the, uh, building structure size to the parcel of land that it's located on. And the ratios there are for Commercial Core, it's one point two, which allows a higher level of intensity of development, and the Causeway District is, which is, uh, point five-five. When we look at this, we took a look at the application that came from the developer, and, um, there's missing information about square footage for the hotels, the garage, the lobbies, and all of the other structures in terms of the, uh, the floor area space that they're proposing to, uh, to build. Uh, so it's, it's impossible to calculate, uh, what the FAR is for each of these buildings. There's a couple of comments here about the human scale of architecture designed in the current plan. Architecture of town center, this is from the plan again, "Should have a visibly interactive first floor, a high level of facade articulation, and human scale enmascing in detail." Uh, the basis for comparison, the building heights, building and heights is not comparison to other developments, such as ocean sands, but to the human scale. And we don't think that, um, this is scaled to the current situation. The current proposal is not scaled to what I would call that human scale. Uh, some of the buildings are large monolithic blank buildings that are inappropriate according to the architectural guidelines. Uh, it's particularly noticeable in the condos A and B, uh, on a hun, on the Tom Stewart Causeway. If you look at those, they're very flat, uh, surfaces, uh, facing the street, uh, pretty, pretty much nondescript, not very arc, not very much architectural interest or detail in those buildings. So this is the second issue in the, uh, the special area plan that we think has been neglected by the developers, neglected by the city. Uh, there, there was a report done, uh, I think in conjunction with the, the Planning Council, the Pinellas Planning Council, and also the city in August of two thousand and fourteen. There are a couple of points in there that are, that I think are, are pretty important to take a look at. Uh, the first one deals with the, what we call the ability, what they call the ability to mix uses within the Commercial Core. And what, what the SAP does is allow the city to, uh, mix, uh, developments. You can have, uh, you can have some commercial, you can have residential, uh, all within, uh, all within the, the same, uh, development process. And that was designed to, I think, enti, entice developers to come before the city and make proposals, give them more flexibility in this particular area. Uh, it also allowed, uh, the developers to, uh, add things together on a, on a, on a, on a piece of property. For example, uh, you know, something might be developed so you could, uh, build, uh, ten hotel units on a piece of property. Uh, or it would be, it could be developed, we'll, we'll say with, um, a restaurant on it. Uh, what this, what this, um, this reference to mixed use means, you could combine those together and increase the amount of the development that took place within a piece of property. The second item on here is density limiting factors. Uh, for example, height limits and impervious surface coverage standards both serve to place a limit on the amount of development possible on a site. And this goes back to the, uh, the two criteria you looked early, at earlier, the FAR, the FAR, and also the height of the buildings. Uh, the developers had put together this commercial space and residential space and hotel space, uh, on these lots. They've done a good job of doing that and following the criteria for that, but what they have not done is, is looked at the height limitations uh, that restrict how much development can take place on these particular pieces of property outlined in the SAP. Uh, the mixed use, the, the use idea was designed to give developers flexibility, entice them to develop here, and I think that's a positive part of it. You know, our concern, my concern, is that the height limitations have completely been forgotten in the development process. What's needed now? Uh, given the current situation, uh, the current debt and the general financial condition of the city, the financial impact of the streetscaping, infrastructure improvements, and potential operational costs associated with larger development, I think that needs to be studied. We don't know what these projects are likely to cost the city, uh, in the short term and in the longer term. The city should begin to scope out the financial impact of developments. Uh, we've not had a chance yet to take a look at the development agreements. Uh, but I know in the previous development agreements, uh, there were a number of, um, uh, offers that were made and given back to developers that really need to be examined. Uh, we're not sure the city or current citizens should have to, uh, pay for any kind of developmental improvements that need to be made to, uh, restructure the roadways, for example. Uh, we think there's been insufficient traffic analysis, especially across multiple projects that need to be, that need to address quality of life and, um, resident safety. And those things will, will take up in, in, in future, um, uh, presentations to the, uh, to the commission. I think there's also some other failures that have taken place, uh, you know, by the city staff. The city should regularly vet all development applications and follow the plan review process, process specified in the following ordinances. Uh, this is in Article Two Site Plans in the Madeira Beach Code of Ordinances. Uh, Section one-ten-three-forty deals with reimbursement of expenses. Uh, one-ten-fifty-one deals with the scope of the review. In looking at the current application, looking at the applications that were put in last year and approved by the, uh, by the commission, uh, the scope of review was not done. Uh, Section one-ten-seventy-one, uh, deals with the submission contents for the development, for the development applications. Looking at, uh, what has been proposed so far by the developers, looking at what was proposed last year and approved by the BOC, uh, those requirements were not met. So we think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with this project. I guess my summation would be that it needs to be sent back to the, uh, Planning Board for review of the issues that we raised here. My sense was that the Planning Board got these, uh, development proposals at the very last minute, didn't have a great deal of time to, uh, go over and review them, and probably did not get a lot of tutoring, you know, by the staff itself on, you know, what, what the requirements were, particularly in regard to the height, uh, in regard to the FAR, in regard to these sections of the, uh, city's Code of Ordinances. Just a lot of missing stuff there. Uh, very few questions asked by the Planning Board. You know, my question to you would be, you know, have you reviewed these items I brought up as individual members of the Board of Commissioners? And have you made an independent assessment as to whether or not the developers have come close to meeting the requirements in the Code of Ordinances, uh, the requirements in the SAP regarding heights, and the requirements in the, in the SAP regarding, uh, the FAR? I've not seen any, uh, indication at all in any of the documentation presented by anyone here tonight or, uh, at the B, at the, uh, Planning Board meeting that any of these requirements have been met. And I, I don't see any effort to even attempt to look at these issues. Uh, I thank you very much for my chance to, uh, testify here. Uh, I guess what, what I've learned over the process of the past year is that everybody thought this thing was going to be a slam dunk last year. And, uh, here we are, you know, fifteen months later, and everything is dead in the water. Unless, unless you begin to grapple with some of the issues I've raised, some of the issues that John and Larry have raised, I think this could be dead in the water for a longer period of time. And until, you know, you begin to wake up and look at this and look at the issues and look at the concern of citizens, uh, I think, uh, this development process, uh, is trapped. Thank you very much. Uh, I would present a copy of this to Tom. Okay. I will send you that tomorrow, and please feel free to distribute it. If you have any questions about it, uh, please feel free to contact me, or, uh, you can ask your planning consultant. Uh, I, I guess you no longer have a planning director, so that person is not available. Uh, staff resources at the city in terms of planning and development are, are pretty slim at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Healy, since I was on the Planning Commission in two thousand and nine, and I know you presented the, uh, the two, oh-nine plan to us, and I believe Commissioner Lister was on the Board of Commissioners at that time. Um, from what you've seen, has these plans been walked through to the previous planning commission, to the, uh, commission city now, and I know we have a, a commission, a commissioner now that just came from the Planning Commission? Were you walked through these by the staff?
Yes, I've had time to review everything before looking at any of these plans prior to. And it was not just last minute either.
All right, sir, 'cause I know that, uh, some of the things you bring forth, and I know that Mr. Healy brought them forth when I was on the Planning Commission on two thousand and nine, and they were well looked at, and I remember our meetings, and I didn't see you there, sir. Right, so I'm, I'm just kind of curious why these thoughts are kind of just popping up now?
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't get anything last minute.
You don't know why your thoughts are just popping up now?
Pardon?
Why you're all of a sudden coming forth with this after you knew this was going on in two thousand and nine, correct?
We did. I, well, I can tell you what happened in two thousand and nine. Um, we had signed up to participate in one of the meetings. Uh, the, uh, quasi-judicial process says you have to sign up five days in advance. Uh, Tom, Trask, and Corp, in, in, interprets that to mean seven days in advance. So we were disallowed from testifying. I think we had also kind of thrown up our hands.
Sir, I'm talking about two thousand and nine.
Pardon?
Two thousand and nine.
Oh, what about two thousand and nine? I'm sorry.
Well, we first went through these plans back in two thousand and nine.
I wasn't here in two thousand and nine.
Oh, I thought you moved here two thousand and six.
Two thousand, two thousand and ten.
That's what you said.
If I said two thousand and six, it was two thousand and ten.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
No, I was not here then, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, you know, I think, you know, the question you raised is an interesting question.
Well, no, and, and I just, and, and, well, take turns talking, but.
Because, because, you know, nobody knew what was exact, what was happening. I mean, the, the planning language is pretty arcane.
Right.
Uh, and I don't think people paid very much attention to it uh, until, you know, the developments kind of hit the street almost suddenly, and they were rushed through, they were being rushed through the process very quickly. And I think at that point, people sat back and said, you know, what's going on here? Is this what we want in our city? That there was no discussion, uh, there were no open meetings to discuss what, you know, what people were interested in having in terms of development. It was just, all of a sudden, it was there. And then once it was there, it was, it was on a fast track. People wanted to, you know, the commission wanted to get it done. Um, there are a lot of people who testified and wrote letters, uh, to the commission last year, and Tom very patiently read a lot of those letters, probably some nights maybe for an hour long. And when all those letters were read and all the complaints were there, all the concerns were expressed, nothing happened. You just kind of fast-tracked this thing, and you signed off on it. It, it was just, it was pretty amazing.
Sir, I'm only bringing up as you said that nothing went through the process, and I'm saying, back in two thousand and nine, when I was on the Planning Commission,
That's possible. That's possible.
It went through the process.
But people don't know what, people didn't understand exactly what was taking place until they saw these development plans and the fast-track that they were on.
Okay. That's your opinion. Thank you.
That's, well, I, I think there are a lot of people who, who share that opinion.
Is there no, is there any more to your testimony?
Uh, you know, you will recall that the city tried to fast-track changing the manner in which the city could.
Excuse me, sir, is there any more to your testimony?
Yes. Uh, the city, I'm going to answer your question. If you will, will recall, uh, the city was trying to fast-track and change the way in which it could sell property. And there was an election on that, and the city lost that election sixty-eight percent, thirty-two percent. Seems to me there'd be a.
You're out of order. Deputy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next person.
Sir, you will be removed.
The next person who filed a notice was Stephen Miller. Mr. Miller, are you here? Okay, Mr. Miller's not here. And then, lastly, the person that filed a notice, Sam Baker. Is Mr. Baker here? Okay, Mr. Baker here is not either, is not here either. Okay, so now is the time, Mayor, for anyone from the public that wants to speak on this issue to step forward, and they should be limited to the standard three minutes.
I'm the city clerk.
Rob Klingel.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Rob Klingel. I live on Reddington Beach, your neighbor, right down the road. Whatever you do affects me a little bit. I lived here since 1959, so I've seen a little bit of development here. This used to be a sandbar. But, if you recall, at the last meeting, or two or months ago, three months ago, I was here, and I hired Dr. Dale Brill and Charlie Gutner of ThinkSpot. They did a study of the project, just to see if there was any red flags anywhere along the line. They didn't really find anything. I gave the, the study to you to read over. The only thing they did see was maybe the traffic, which seems to be a big issue. And I did hire another, I said I would go out and hire another traffic study from an independent person, and that person is, who is that person? Resner Transportation Consulting. It's very hard to find transportation consulting companies. They're very niche market. So, but he did the first study with both projects. He did not find anything there that was abnormal, or weird, or unusual. Everything was done to the standard. And one thing I wanted him to do was combine the two projects, which I believe they just did, but he's going to redo it as an independent, and go out, and I'm paying for it, go out and do the study to see what a, what the traffic situation is for this area, just to double-check the area. That's the only thing, I just try to catch you up to date. Once I have that information, I will give it to you. You can look it over. I have, I'm just here, I'm, I'm neutral in this, really. Whatever the consultant comes up with is what I'll, I'll let you read, and you can go over it, and what the, the citizens look at it too, and the developers. Thank you very much, and I'll get you some more information later.
Thank you, sir.
Jim Everett.
Well, here we are again. My name's Jim Everett, 15458 First Street East. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, city staff. I come before you again to, to ask for you to approve the project. It's, we've been looking at this for over a year, so I think the developers have gone above and beyond in scaling the project back, back to the 2009 standards. I take a little bit of issue with folks saying that it was rushed through. I spent five years on the Planning Commission, working on these ordinances and changes. I'm not sure where everybody was, those were public meetings, and they were all considered at the time, and certainly were open to the public. It's not exciting stuff until you realize that the planning's being done for your community. So I encourage folks to participate in the process, and volunteer for positions, to help, to help put some of this stuff together like I did. And, you know, I, I, I think these projects are wonderful. I think if you look at what we have today, and what it looks like, and what the proposals look like, you know, it's night and day. I think the safety issues have been brought up and have been addressed. I certainly think the width of the sidewalks is huge. I've mentioned that in several occasions at meetings, about how close to the street those sidewalks are and pedestrians and bicycles travel. So I think it's, I think this will give it a lot more safety from a standpoint of pedestrians and bicyclists in Madeira, which obviously we want, we want to encourage that mode of transportation. I also want to mention the benefit of something that causes a lot of traffic in our community, and that's the fundamental school right across the bridge. I, I, I work, so I travel quite a bit, and I have to deal with that traffic, but I know what a benefit that school is for our community. According to some Pinellas County employees that I've spoken with, it's the second highest in-demand school in the county, based on its outstanding program. And I put up with the traffic because I know it's beneficial for the community. So I think there'll be more traffic here, that's pretty obvious, but I think the benefits that we'll reap from that far outweigh the five or six extra minutes it's going to take me to get to Publix. So I would encourage you to, to vote positively for the project and move it forward.
Hello, I'm Gay Prince. Vote no. One of the S A P major criteria is that this has to be in the public interest. Out of 2,800 registered voters, some of which were found to be deceased or moved, so that number's actually lower, close to 1,100 people told you they wanted you to repeal the 2014-08 ordinance and hear their voices. You chose instead to kill democracy and dismiss them out of hand instead of even putting it to a referendum vote of the people. That's not in the public interest. People that gathered the courage, like myself, to speak out against what was being proposed say, "The government just does what it's going to do. Nothing we say, nothing we can do matters." You've disenfranchised them, disheartened them, and that's not in the public interest. On Friday, May 13th, 2013, the city manager, Shane Crawford, was quoted in the Tampa Bay Times as saying, "But if," end quote, "if they can get 800 to 900 signatures, which is probably more than have voted in most elections, the issue certainly needs to go to a referendum," end quote. This was in regard to another petition, and yet this petition, signed by close to 1,100 people, is thrown out. I quoted the article at a meeting last year, and Mr. Crawford, I asked him to hold to his word regarding going to a referendum, given that it was more than his threshold of 800 to 900 signatures. Not a word. That's not in the public interest. There have been no competent substantial F D O T, official studies on traffic. When tourists can finally get to their destination due to the traffic jam, and then try to get off this island with difficulty, they won't come back. There is a waiting list of 250 children just for grade six at the Madeira Beach School on the other side of the causeway, but let's disregard this concern, and as a bonus, add to it. There have been no competent substantial environmental studies. The rest of the conscious world is working at minimizing their footprint, not here. Someone made a clever suggestion that the Holton property be switched with the City Hall digs. Not as many people by far would need to access 150th from Holtonville if it became City Hall. Those three existing condos on the same side as Holton's have not been aided in their traffic problems ever. Why doesn't someone put a plan together with Jeff DeJure for right-of-way access behind his building and come out right at 150th at the Madeira Way Light? I challenge the public to go into those condos and then try to get out. Don't turn left, you have to go to Public first, and then turn around and go back the other way to get into Madeira. Don't forget to add 300 cars an hour coming back and forth from the Holtonville estimation. All of the above, not in the public interest. There's no, been, been no concern for the veterans. Even when someone follows your five-day stipulation for being affected party, you choose to make an excuse not to let them be heard. You sat here, and not one of you stood up for an 85-year-old disabled Korean War veteran trying to tell you what this would do to hinder his quality of life and his health. Instead of simply letting him feel like his voice could just be heard, you sat like lumps in those fancy white leather chairs that his taxes paid for and why. Don't you think about his, how he put his life on the line every day he was in Korea? And yet, the next day, you give an award to the A M, American Vets Post 273. I've already told you about my neighbor, who's also a veteran, and his family.
Excuse me, ma'am, you about finished? Everybody gets three minutes, or?
Sorry, I was very passionate about the veterans.
I know you're very passionate, absolutely, thank you.
Oh, and.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down from the heights and density where you ought to have respectfully started.
Helen Palladino.
Terry just wants me to gavel you some.
Oh, I'm going to be sure, I swear. Hi, I'm Helen Palladino, 13319 Boca Ciega Avenue. I've been a resident of this beautiful city for eighteen years, and have just seen it really improve every step of the way, and I'm very proud of it. And I want to say, welcome to Miss Pharaoh Spildee. Thank you very much for your service. Glad to see you up there. This is probably the fifth or sixth time I've been up here asking this commission to approve the Madeira Beach Town Center project. I think it's lovely. Now that it's scaled down, it's, it's even better. I think Mr. Carnes was very responsible in scaling it down when he frankly didn't have to. I love the public space, I'm glad that didn't change. I love those wide sidewalks, so thank you very much for that. Look, something is going to be built on that property, so we need to take a look at it, and if this is something we can live with, which I definitely can live with that, I think this is a lovely project. I think it'd be a great thing to have in our gateway. We need to grab it while we have a developer who's willing to put the time in, address the resident's complaints, I guess, about his first pass at this. I don't think we can, can expect a property owner to keep reducing and reducing and reducing what they put on their property when it's frankly not even required of them. So I just want to say, let's, let's get this done. Let's finally vote on this and get this done. I'm really tired of looking at those faded pink and aqua awnings. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right, is there any further comments from staff? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. attorney.
Yeah, we need to go, to give the applicant the opportunity to provide any rebuttal, and then the city staff is going to do that, and then after that, the summaries, so. Rebuttal.
Thank you. Kate Wells, again. I'm just going to kind of go through my notes as I was writing down what different folks were speaking to. There was questions with regard to setbacks and parking. I think the, it's clear that the site plan we have submitted creates both the horizontal envelope for the buildings and the location of the structures and the public access areas. We would be confined to that. That is our zoning. With regard to parking, while some, some commissioners may feel that the parking requirements are not adequate, we are required to comply with the parking requirements as they are currently adopted by the city. We are not taking advantage of the shared parking formula. We are complying with each of the parking requirements for the different uses, and that's what the code requires as, as it currently stands. There was discussion with regard to the flow of traffic, and I think it's important to remember that ultimately, F D O T is going to have to approve any of the permits for the improvements to the roadways, and it will be F D O T's decision how those improvements ultimately look. What we're proposing to the commission is those improvements we feel are appropriate, given the results of our traffic study. And again, our traffic study confirmed that the proposed project, while it will increase traffic, it will not decrease the current level of service. With regard to, there was discussion about this petition that had been filed previously. I think it's important to note for the record that the courts dismissed that lawsuit based on a failure to state a cause of action. So let's, let's be clear about that, that petition. The folks that were instrumental in moving it forward, based upon how it was handled with the city, then pursued their right to, to try and have it enforced and addressed in the court system, and that has been resolved, it was dismissed. I want to turn over to Cindy Terra Pani, so she may talk about the height comments that were made during the public comment section, and also, I believe, Mr. Lippa, Mr. Gay talked about height and F A R. So I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Terra Pani, so she can address that briefly, and that will conclude our rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again, Cindy Terra Pani with Florida Design Consultants. I want to address two issues. One is the F A R, and the second is the height. First, with regard to the F A R, the testimony tonight was a little bit confusing. F A R applies only to, to commercial development, it does not apply to the hotel or to residential. So I'm quoting from page 33, Table 1, the development standards, this is in the special area plan. In the causeway district, which is the eastern portion of our property, the density for residential for the two condos is 15 units an acre. If we did temporary lodging, there would be 60 units per acre, we're not doing that use there. In a commercial-only use, the Marina, the F A R is .55. So you do not calculate the F A R against the residential. In the commercial core, again, the residential density is 15 units an acre, the temporary lodging is 60 units an acre, and we are doing, of course, temporary lodging and residential in that portion of the property. Commercial-only, if it were just retail or restaurant uses, the F A R would be 1.2, but it is not, it's a mixed use. I'd also like to, the easiest way, I guess, for, for me to explain it, and, and maybe for you all to take a look at the math, is in my report, page six, it's Table 2, and we just, we have calculated separately the F A R and the density for the residential, and the density for the hotel, separately for the two-character districts, because that is required by the 2009 plan. So looking at the causeway district at 1.42 acres, you cannot aggregate or, you know, density and intensity in that district in the 2009 plan. So the code says you can do either 15 units an acre, or a .55 F A R, or some combination of the two that is a proportionate share that doesn't exceed the total. So you can see, if you maxed out the 15 units an acre, it would be 21 units. If you maxed out the F A R, it would be 34,000 square feet. We have done neither. We have reduced both of those for a proportionate calculation for 16 units in the causeway and 8,000 square feet of the Marina. In the commercial core, the 2009 plan does allow additive density, so we are using that additive density there. It allows 60 units an acre, which would be 316 units, and that is what we are proposing. It also allows plus a .55 F A R applied to the overall site, which would be some 126,000 square feet. We're not doing that much, anywhere near that, we're doing 45,000 square feet, so about a third of the maximum. We're also allowed to do 15 units an acre, which would be 79 units, and we're slightly under at 74. So you can see, we are clearly complying with both the F A R and the density requirements of each individual district separately, and only using the additive in the commercial core where it was allowed in the 2009 plan. The second issue I wanted to address was the comment that the special area plan only allows three, three floors, three stories, and we are greater than three stories, and the fact, yes, we are greater than three stories, but I would refer you to page 69, again, of the special area plan, which has a discussion about what the current zoning is, and then it discusses the option of the P D zoning district for applicants to pursue. And I'll just read this, I like to quote it specifically. Development seeking greater height must be submitted under the planned development P D zoning process, which allows for greater flexibility in the layout of the project site, in exchange for more extensive review and the obligation to contribute to public capital improvement projects. Use of the P D process while providing for flexibility in site design does not allow a project to exceed the standards set by the countywide plan rules of the P P C. While the P D zoning district is available, no properties within the town center have the zoning designation at the present time. That was at the time the plan was written. But clearly, the P D zoning district is a tool that's allowed for applicants to pursue. We have requested that P D zoning district, as we've been talking about tonight, and the special area plan clearly says that you may exceed the height that is called out in the special area plan if you pursue the P D zoning district, and in exchange for that flexibility. I also want to echo one thing that Mr. Clemmons stated. You're not giving us a path. You're not giving us a get out of jail free or do anything you want path. What you are approving, if you do approve it, is a specific site plan with specific uses, in specific locations, at specific heights, and specific densities. We are not allowed by your code to deviate from that master plan that will be approved, if it is approved, and attached to the rezoning ordinance. We are not allowed to deviate from that. We can reduce the number of units, or we could increase the setbacks, but we cannot make any changes that would be more negatively, for example, reducing a setback or adding units. To. To do that, the second thing, to add more units or to decrease a setback or to increase a height, all of those specifically in your code are required a new public hearing. That's not what we're saying... That's not just me saying it. You certainly can ask your staff, but that's what your code provides. So you are approving... It's basically a... You're approving a specific site plan with all of those specific requirements that are being incumbent on the developer to meet. I just want to emphasize that part. I'm happy to answer any questions about the height or the FAR or any other aspect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. Cindy, would you be able to tell us what your impervious surface ratio is?
I can, yes. Thank you. The allowable ISR in the Causeway, the eastern portion, is .70. The allowable ISR in the commercial core is .85, and I would ask him to just to refer to what our proposed is, but I know that it was within those ISR.
That impervious surface ratio amount was calculated and was presented with our development agreement and the plan. It's in the Civil Engineers Report, and I just don't have it with me tonight. It is in the documents that were submitted for your review. Do you have the full supplemental?
Page four of the Civil Engineers Report.
With regard to that page, the civil site plan and data, the overall site impervious surface ratio is 0.73, and that's in the materials that were submitted for this application.
You say overall. Do you mean like both sites? Do they individually?
Yeah, we did do an amendment. The .73 was the blended average of the two, but we did do an amendment. This is an older page. We did do an amendment where we broke it into the two districts, and it was less than each district. It was less than .7, 0.7 in the Causeway District and less than 0.85 in the commercial core district, and that was submitted. And I apologize, I just didn't bring that copy of the document with me today.
As long as we're below the threshold.
Both collectively and individually.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Healy wants to address a couple of issues as well.
If I may, Mayor. Mr. Lippa raised a question, and I think it was expounded on by Mr. Gay relative to the height issue, why the Marriott Hotel, for example, is the height it is under PD, and some of the buildings here are proposed to be higher. I reviewed the Marriott Hotel plan under the planned development process. My recollection is it's about an acre and a half in size. It allowed sixty units an acre, which allowed ninety units. They could have, in fact, added additional height. They were limited by the number of units that were available, given the size of the site, and the height of the building is simply in relationship to the number of units that were allowed there. So there is no discrepancy between what was approved there and what's being approved here. It was the same process, and that speaks to the comments that Mr. Gay made. And I have to say that I take strong umbrage with a number of his comments, that the review was incomplete, it didn't meet the criteria, the submission provisions as provided for in Article 2 Site Plan, Section 110 340, were not consistent with the requirements. That's just not accurate. I'm sure Mr. Gay has well-intended, but he's looked at separate parts of the code and has never either understood or been able to put them together in a way, in a coherent fashion. And the result of that are some comments that the height exceeds that permitted in the special area plan. It does not. And Mr. Terrapanny just quoted, and I can recite to you, it's on page sixty-nine, the special area plan. It specifically says that the process to be used for an adjustment in height is to require the PD process. That's what we have required. So the requirement, and the plan further acknowledges, and I probably ought to start with that, put it back. It starts on page forty-four by saying, "All proposed development redevelopment should be reviewed using the PD review process, whether or not it's proposed by the applicant or not. The applicant and review process should be amended to require the PD process for all proposed development." That's what we, in fact, did subsequent to the adoption of the 2009 special area plan, so that that very point could be reviewed on a project-specific basis, where the commission, the planning commission, take into account the proposed nature and scale of the project in relationship to the height and the density that is proposed. So the special area plan specifically provides for it. That's the process that we've employed here and used and reviewed pursuant to each and every requirement for the project to submit and has been reviewed according to those agreements. He's also confused, and I think Cindy explained it, I don't need to go back over that, the issue with the floor area ratio. The 2009 provisions, which they have complied with, distinguish between the floor area ratio for commercial, retail, or restaurant use, and in this case, also the Marina, and density for the hotel number of units or condominium residential units, which are computed separately. That's identified accurately in the plan. We've reviewed it accordingly, and it meets the requirements of the code. The confusion may be that he referenced the Pinellas Planning Council review of the 2014 amendments. When we increased the potential for additive density and intensity, particularly for hotel units, we then capped the floor area ratio to be all-inclusive because of the added density and the provision typically with that increased density for a parking structure. And that overall floor area ratio is four. The original plan, approved back in June of 2016, was reviewed pursuant to that, and even with that higher building height, greater number of units, it fell well below. I think it was at about seventy-five percent of that maximum floor area ratio, 4.0. It came in at 3. something. So in all cases, the height that has been reviewed and recommended to you and determined at least by staff's view to be consistent with the intent of the special area plan overall, the intent of the comprehensive plan to provide for it, and now the specific provisions in your code under the special area plan, excuse me, under the planned development process have been complied with. He also talked, I guess, about the finance and cost features and the traffic analysis, all of which have been reviewed and sorted out very carefully in the development agreement, and which includes specific provisions that will be brought back to you before you approve in final form the rezoning and the plan, detailing what those responsibilities and understandings are between the applicant, who has assumed responsibility for making those infrastructure improvements, and the city, as well as the traffic analysis and the provisions specifically that both Mr. Lippa and Mr. Roloff spoke to that are in the development agreement. So I would like to clarify the record on those points with respect to those earlier comments.
There are no questions of Mr. Healy?
I do have a question for Mr. Healy. What do our code... What does our code say as far as parking requirements for commercial restaurants, hotels, and things like that? Would you be able to tell us?
I'd have to go back and look specifically with the individual parts, Commissioner. We did review it pursuant to the number of units and floor area here proposed and found it to comply with those parking requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Healy, and you go back to... I'm just going back to the Marriott, and like I said, coming on this from base zero, when we started looking at the density high ordinances coming from the county and the city of Madeira Beach starting to adopt them back in, you know, really in 2009, moving forward. Can you kind of explain that, maybe simplify it? Because I don't think a lot of people get it, because we did. We did a PD with the Marriott, and we did allow them a little bit of height extension, because you get so much acreage, and what the ordinances do just give you a little bit of flexibility to allow you a little bit more rooms, because what the county was looking for in moving, you know, municipalities forward was creating more hotel rooms, or... I mean, can we do a little simplified, maybe, and I hate to use this word, dummy it down?
I guess the easy way to try and explain it is that, as one of the gentlemen who spoke here said, there's been an evolution, I think Mr. Lippa spoke to it, over time in terms of an original designation under the comprehensive plan for planned redevelopment mixed use, in the hope that that would spur some interest in redevelopment. We realized in 2009 that in order to employ that under the countywide rules, you had to, in fact, have a special area plan, a specific plan that they reviewed, was approved by the planning council and the board of county commissioners, that set the provisions and the guidelines and policies in the town center area, the ninety-five acre downtown area. And that was well and good, but the special area plan 2009, if you read it, is replete with references to the fact that the plan by itself won't accomplish this without the attendant implementation provisions. And it attempted then to identify what those incentives needed to be in order to make use of those, to bring about those policies. That's why in... Whenever the countywide plan was amended, I want to say probably 2010, 2011 era, they increased the provision specifically for temporary lodging, hotel units, after an extensive study done by the county's planning council and the county economic development department that determined that our current standards were not, were simply discouraging new investment in hotel properties. In order to try and take advantage of those increased densities, we made a series of amendments in 2014 that allowed for some additive density, but also imposed some other limitations, the floor area ratio specifically. And the original proposal here, of course, was to make use of that. The proposal in front of us now, and the one we're charged with reviewing now, doesn't do that. It really goes back to the 2009 standards with no incentives, additional incentives for hotel development beyond the additive density that was in the original 2009 special area plan. So we're kind of back to where we were, and the developers have proposed to use those standards, both as to density, the provision for additive height under planned development, for all of the other attendant standards that we have reviewed and found compliant. I hope that helps kind of the overview of how we got to where we are, and we've, in fact, in some respects, taken a step back for the moment. Our report says very clearly that under the rules today, as they stand, based on the court, the circuit court decision, they are, in fact, entitled to do more than they have asked for. They've chosen not to do that for their own reasons. We have found that compliant with what existed in 2009.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. City Attorney?
This is the time for summary to be done by both the applicant and city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Terras. Just to clarify for the record with regard to the question about impervious surface area, in the commercial core, the maximum allowed is .85, and what we are proposing is .73. And in the Causeway District, the maximum allowed is .70, and what this project proposes will be .64. So the impervious surface area will be less than the maximum allowed in the special area plan for each of the districts. As I mentioned at the outset of tonight's hearing, the commission is required to make a zoning decision, not based upon popular opinion, but based upon facts that constitute competent substantial evidence. Although some residents have shared their opinion that they're concerned about the flow of traffic generated by this project, or the height, or the FAR, I did not hear any competent substantial evidence that the application does not meet the criteria in your code. On the other hand, the testimony and evidence presented by your planning staff, as well as the testimony and documentary evidence presented by Mr. Clemmons, Mr. Pergulisi, and Cindy Terrapanny constitute competent substantial evidence that the proposed development meets the applicable criteria in your code. We thank you for your time and consideration, and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
It's my understanding from Mr. Healy, he has no further comment or summary. So at this point, Mayor, it's time to close this portion of the public hearing. Consider putting a motion on the floor. I would remind you that in the staffing, the staff report, there had been a recommendation with certain conditions, and with that in mind, it's now... It's now the commission's review and consideration.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for ordinance number 2017-01.
I'll make the motion to pass ordinance 201701.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any further comments from the commission?
Yes, Mayor, if I may. This project is a PD plan, PD zoning. Basically, what PD means, as was stated earlier, is that the development team bring a project before us with the size, the shape, of course, the density would have to meet state regulations, units per acre, FAR, things in that nature, but height, setbacks, parking spaces, things in that nature are a part of the PD plan, and also architectural elevations, typically speaking. So in order to, in my personal opinion, in order to have a PD plan approved, it has to be demonstrated that the project is a good project in so many ways, articulation, undulation, wedding cake effect. I'm okay with the traffic issues. I'm okay with Robert Pergulisi's determination of traffic. However, I would love to see a parking demand study, even though, you know, our code may say it's okay, but, you know, maybe with the next... This is my personal opinion, is that maybe with the next meeting, next public hearing, maybe Mr. Pergulisi can provide us with a parking demand study to be sure that there will be plenty of parking spaces provided for all the various uses. I understand there is a duplicate of uses for parking, you know, if you're at the hotel, you may want to, you know, keep your car parked there and go to a restaurant, but a restaurant could be a... Used by, you know, anybody else that could be driving by, a drive-by traffic. They may want to pull in. So I would feel more comfortable if a parking demand study is provided to us, maybe with the next hearing. Also, if we can get some sort of a wedding cake effect with the building, and that is typically done with the PD, I will approve the plan subject to these conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anything else?
Thank you. So it's, you know, we're tasked with following facts. I'm going to go to jury duty sometime in this month, and so, you know, you've got to deal with facts. You can't go with what might happen or what is conjectured. And on page 302 of this report that we have in our files, is they're required to have a minimum of... They can have 713 spaces, and in these five parcels that they have, they have 701. So that's within the parameters or the guidelines that we've already set. There's... We don't know how many people are going to go to the restaurants or to the spa or to the shops. We set the guidelines well before we got here today, and they've been within these guidelines. You know, the first planned development, we're going from one planned development to the other. The first planned development that we passed was well beyond this, the threshold well beyond this. He's scaled it back. He's within every parameter, and, you know, there's no elephant in the room here, Mr. Gay. There's simply not an elephant in the room. You're just not on the same page. You spend two and a half hours with Mr. Healy, you're going to be okay with the height and the density and the setbacks. It's simply, you're not comparing apples to apples. And as for traffic, you know, we don't own State Road 666. That's not ours. I would love to call FDOT and say, "I want a crosswalk right there. I want a traffic light right there." I can go to Kathleen, and I... Kathleen Peters is one of my best friends, and, you know, I'm sure she'll do whatever she can, but we simply don't have any authority on Route 666. I don't know what you're...
I, I don't know what, what else you want me to do up here. I, I can scream, I can holler, I can go to Tallahassee and tell them that, but I don't make that decision. That's FDOT. I have these right here, these in front of me. These are the parameters that I've set for this, this developer to come in and do it, and he's done it not once, he's done it twice. And for us to sit here and, and limbo this for, for another report, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I don't see your point. We, we need to get this done because he's done his due diligence. He's set with our, our citizens that were not happy. The citizens that were happy, they might set with him. He, he's set with our citizens that were unhappy. He's come to some common ground. We just need to... We had a, we had a couple that bought a, a building over here. I don't know if they bought it. They rented it on Madera Way, and they were so excited. They wanted to, they wanted to show people what it used to look like. And they went outside, and they had pictures from fifty years ago. The pictures looked exactly the same, folks, exactly the same. They're going, really? Come on. It's been this way for fifty years. It's time to change. Please, let's get this changed.
Thank you, Commissioner Lister. Commissioner?
No questions.
Okay. I thought you were going somewhere. And, Larry John, thank you very much. I know y'all put a lot of time in over there, working with everybody. Mr. Carnes, I know you've been working due diligently to, to scale this back and, and trying to find a happy medium. And Commissioner Lister, you're absolutely right. It's not the nineteen-fifties anymore. Let's move forward. And I'm hoping that both sides can see it's, this lawsuit stuff's BS, guys. I hate to be politically incorrect, but it's BS. You want cockapow costing taxpayers dollars? You're doing it. And for what? I think we could all sat in a room and had this done without these attorneys. So let's end it. Both sides need to sit down and finish it. Anything else from staff?
Mr. Mayor, just, just two quick thoughts. A, I completely concur with Commissioner Lister. You know, if, if we're gonna go and second guess the code, then change the code, frankly. I don't know how you would do a detailed analysis with any validity as to, you know, how many cars are gonna stay at the restaurant and, you know, go to the spa and that type of thing. So if he meets the parameters of the code, I, I think you need to leave it at that. If you don't like the code, then obviously you need to revisit the code. And then also, while Mr. Dave Haley is here, I just want to explain the process, and I know this is a long meeting and this is gonna be a beleaguered point, but this whole idea of this was being rushed and, and, and pushed through, if you, if you remember. First of all, I, I met Mr. Jim Holton on January eighteenth, the day after Martin Luther King Day in 2012, because the staff tricked me on my first day of work and told me to come to work on Monday, and the doors were locked. Met him the next day to start talking about redeveloping the Levrocks property, which was in my portfolio as to get it redeveloped. Four months later, we made a deal with him to forgive a small water lien if he started developing the property. That's 2012. Two years later, Dick Sampson, the guy that was running Berry Loft Properties, got upset with me because I was updating the commission during commission meetings about how soon the property was gonna be sold and the tenants were leaving. So we're talking, we're going back to 2012. It's 2017, so we're, we're talking five years of detailed data. And then let's go back to last Christmas, where I said, where everyone thought we were gonna push it through before Christmas Eve. And I said, folks, next Christmas, we'll be sitting here, talking about this very same thing. The next month, in January, they were upset because the plant commission meeting fell on the day of the college football game. I said, well, jeez, maybe we'll be lucky enough. Alabama might play Clemson again next year. We got it, right? Here we are again, right? So this has not been rushed through. Some, it's a, it's a chicken or the egg type thing. It's gotta start somewhere, so it does start with staff. The developer comes in, they say, hey, I want to do this. We mold it into something that will fit the code, and then we bring it to you. That's when the public interaction comes, and up until recently, we haven't had any. So I, I don't want to say anybody's been asleep at the wheel, but this board shouldn't be criticized, neither should the plant commission, for attracting development. We've been trying to do that for five years, and very openly. And now that we've got it, some people don't like it, and we're, some people aren't gonna like anything that we do. So here we are, it's on a silver platter, we've beat it to death. We've been on this thing now for fifteen months in front of y'all. Like you said, it's time to change that picture. So with that...
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
You're welcome.
All right, Melonsey Clerk?
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Pharaoh Spieldy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Obahy?
Yes.
Think we're gonna take about a five-minute recess. Okay, we're reconvening at ten oh eight PM. Next ordinance, two thousand seventeen dash zero two. Mr. City Attorney, please read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero two, an ordinance of the city of Madera Beach, Florida, updating Madera Beach's comprehensive plan capital improvement element by adopting an addendum to the five-year schedule of capital improvements for the FY twenty seventeen through FY twenty twenty-one, providing for reading by title only, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of two thousand seventeen dash zero two by title only.
At this time, I will entertain a motion?
I make a motion that this commission pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh two.
Second?
I have a motion of the second. Is there any comments from staff?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and before we dive into it, I, I do want to apologize to Mr. Haley for the gentleman's comments in the audience about saying that we have scarce planning and zoning resources. I think Mr. Haley's probably comes as highly recommended and, and respected as they come, so I apologize because that was embarrassing, at least for me. In regards to this ordinance, first of all, staff recommends approval. Secondly, we would like to change our methodology, and Mr. Haley's gonna speak to that on how we do this, because we don't need to do this every year and change our plan. And so with that, before I say something incorrect, I'd like to give the, the floor to Mr. Haley, because we'd like to change this up, so we're not doing this annually.
Mayor Commissioners, the manager and I have talked about this. This ordinance is fine. It does update your five-year schedule of capital improvements in your capital improvement element, which is part of your comprehensive plan. The state law was amended in 2011 to allow you to adopt the five-year scheduled improvements annually by
allow you to adopt the five-year scheduled improvements annually by resolution without going through a formal process of amending your plan. So subsequent to this, this will update your element, get it current. Over the next year, with other routine housekeeping amendments, we'll amend it again to provide for you to do it annually in the course of adopting your annual budget by resolution and avoid the separate steps to go through an ordinance and sending it to the state for amendment of your capital improvement element. So just a more straightforward way of doing it, subsequent to this. This gets it current. This is the right thing to do for now.
It streamlines the whole process?
It does.
Can you make amendments to it if you needed to?
Certainly.
Okay.
You do it by resolution, you'd amend it by resolution.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comment? Commissioners? MC Clerk?
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrell Spilde?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
All right, next, city manager's evaluation. You have the floor, Mr. City Manager.
It's the time of year, folks. The hardest decision we make all year long. So for the benefit of our freshman commissioners, so to speak, I get evaluated on my anniversary date every January, which is ironically Martin Luther King Day, January 17th. And at that time, you have the ability to amend my employment contract. I'm the only employee that you have under contract besides your city attorney. Over the past year, obviously, you've all been through or with me when I've gone through what I've gone through. It's been the happiest time of my life, but obviously the most, you know, disturbing as well. You read the memo that I put together. I certainly maintain that it was absolutely political sabotage, and if that wouldn't have happened, I don't think we would have nearly received some of the embarrassment that we did. However, it is because of me that the city was embarrassed, and I chose to pursue the relationship with Ms. McGrady. And so hindsight again, 2020, she should have probably taken one of those two other jobs that actually paid her more money and lined my pockets, so to speak, heavier than staying here, which I'm accused of lining my pockets with that $4 raise we gave her a couple of months ago to stand in for us. But with that being said, there's not much to change here. If you want to adjust my salary, there's 5% in the budget. You approved 5% raise for the city manager. I'm right in line with comparable city managers. I recommended in the packet that you actually freeze my salary, but it's now in your court. I received perfect evaluations from four or five of you. One of you were not here to obviously evaluate me. And so with that information, I hate to do it, but we have this difficult discussion every year, and it's awkward because I'm sitting right in front of you and you can't have a conversation by yourselves. But I'm comfortable being frozen, and if you want to talk about other things, we can do that as well. So, Mr. Mayor, the floor is back to you.
I'd like to hear from the commissioner.
Well, my opinion, and you know me, I talk a lot. When you freeze something, it stands still. You know, that's just what happens when you freeze something. And if you want your city manager to stand still, then freezes pay. If you want your city manager to go forward, you give him what he deserves. That's all I need to say.
I had a resident come up to me about a week ago, and he told me, he said he'd rather see his taxes go up than us not give Shane a raise. I mean, he was adamant about it. And I know in the past Shane has taken vacation, and maybe a week's vacation, and another week, he's here three days a week still working during his vacation time. He takes calls late at night. He takes the good and the bad. And I brought something to his attention that I never noticed before, but I thought made a lot of sense. On the evaluation, up in the corner, right next to the city emblem, there's a saying by Benjamin Franklin, and this is, "Without continual growth and progress, such words, words as improvement, achievement, and success have no meaning." And that makes a lot of sense. I feel Shane is worth every single penny, and we're budgeted for it, and I am all for it.
Well said, Commissioner.
When I was evaluating Shane, and I told him this, I was trying to find in any of those categories a four out of five, and I just couldn't. It was all five, and I was very objective. He's wonderful. He's done the city wonderfully. Without him, I don't think, you know, we'll be progressing, at least not at the speed that we are. I love the man. He's great in my evaluation. However, I did recommend a freeze, not because I didn't want to, but it was just something that I wrote. I think he deserves probably twice as much as we're giving him. But I'm going to reverse my statement, and I'm not sure what percentage of a raise we're looking at, but he's worth every penny, every dime, every dollar we're giving him. Thank you for your wonderful service.
I did not fail at a, obviously, an evaluation because I'm just up here tonight, but everything I've seen of you, you've done a great job.
Appreciate it.
Well, Mr. Crawford, you know I'm a little different on this because I know you crushed it on the Alabama Clemson game. So I don't think you really need anything, buddy. How you picked that one, bubba, I don't know. You know, Shane, like I said, I just, I go back to that afternoon on the boat. I go back to that afternoon on the boat. If you're going to do it, do it right. I've had the honor of being the president of the mayor's council, so I have worked with every mayor in this city, in this county, and have touched base and have heard from their city managers. And you've done an outstanding job. I look at the amount of grants that you have brought to this city, the money that you bring in. You're worth every penny. And so I hope I hear a pretty decent motion come from this commission to move this forward. So at this time, I'll open up the floor to a motion.
Sorry. I'll make the motion to go ahead and increase the city manager's salary 5%. I'll second that.
I have a motion, the second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. Is there a maximum allowed by rules and regulations by state?
The only thing, only regulation that you have or limitation is actually the severance pay that you can give. And that was given back in the days where there was those golden parachutes of, you know, four years of pay if you got terminated and things of that sort. So, no, you are not. A, this is very humbling, and I certainly appreciate it. I believe, Vince, what we've done in the past is it's just effective on my anniversary date, and it's done by addendum to my contract, which will be drafted by the city attorney. So that can be either understood or included in the motion. And again, it's very much appreciated. And actually, I'm taken back because I didn't mean to embarrass the city doing what I did, and I do feel responsible for it. But again, it's in the past, and we're going to move on to bigger and better things. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, you know, Mr. Crawford, there's bumps in life, buddy. And like I said, we've done a lot, and we've had some bumps. Folks, we've hit some bumps on the road. So the great thing is, we've got a young staff, and they work hard. If we hit a bump, they're real quick to recover from it and keep the city moving forward. So I think you've done a great job in recruiting your entire staff. Everything I see going on, from what our Public Works is doing, finance, sanitation, what I watch happen on those recs fields from across the street every day, and how well our parks look, how clean our city is. I mean, you know, you've got to go to the top when you look at it all. And, Mr. Crawford, you've done an outstanding job.
I appreciate that. And again, not to use Dave's analogy too many times, but my staff pedals that bike about as fast as they can, and I owe it all to them. They make me look damn good, so.
And Dave, we're going to hear this one forever, okay, the bicycle. Thank you, man.
You made fun of all my other analogies.
Yeah, exactly. At least there's been more balls in the air.
Yeah, correct. I'm not juggling anymore.
Would anybody like to make public comment?
I think we should be ashamed to all the people in the fight that we've been facing. I'm sorry, but I've lived here a long time, and he's turned the city around single-handedly. Not disparaging against any of you, but he's the best. And if you want the best, you pay the best. So I don't know if you can double it or triple it, but like that person said, raise my taxes, but keep him because there are other, I know of other places that have asked for it. And I know where I can get him a job that'll pay twice what this pays. But he's dedicated to the city, and I think you need to appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Everett?
So I moved to the city before Shane was city manager. In fact, I began my service on the planning commission before he was the city manager. And I can tell you, it's like night and day. And I know y'all have been here a long time, and I work in other beach communities, and I can tell you, the city manager is the engine that makes it go. And if you don't have the right person in the job, the city don't go. And there are cities that are very close to ours who would kill to have this man as their city manager. So I strongly encourage you to pass the motion and do everything you can to retain him. I think the situations that have occurred over the course of the year is a result of some very mean people who have a little consideration for people's personal and professional lives. And all I can say is their day will come. So I would encourage you to, and I'll be one of those that'll bring that day. So I would encourage you to pass this. Thank you.
Who else? MC Clerk?
Vice Mayor Gavahy?
Yes.
Mayor Palladino?
Yes.
Commissioner Lister?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrell Spilde?
Yes.
All right, next discussion on Department Restructure, Planning, and Zoning Department. I think we've seen a lot of that tonight. So, Mr. Crawford, if you'd like to take the floor.
Yeah, folks, I think I've had an opportunity to speak with each of you one-on-one, so I just want to kind of hit the bullet points. And then, if you look on your agenda, item number six and item number seven are related. But the city attorney and Mr. Healy and I just found a couple of things that we'd like to change, excuse me, in item seven. So part of my staff report was going to be, we're having a special meeting next Tuesday at noon. There's going to be a couple of things on there. Liquor license approval, a lease approval, Mr. Mayor, that's involving that parking lot for Lisa's Cafe. And then we'll add this to that as well, if that is okay with the commission, because I want to get a clean copy of it in front of you and for your review before we pass it. But by now, everyone knows that I've separated employment, if you will, with Ms. Orton. Most of you understand the details of that, and it's not really germane to the conversation. This evening, prior to hiring Ms. Orton, I had propositioned, if you will, Mr. Carrier and Mr. Healy on what I envisioned was a good structure for the department in Madera Beach. Bigger cities, smaller cities, everybody's got a different way to do this. But, and I'm not much for contracting out, but in this instance, I'm more interested in that, especially since we already have a relationship with an engineer that we have had extremely, a good relationship with, and Mr. Healy, obviously, who's well-respected and, you know, a master at his trade. So I re-propositioned, let me go back. Neither of them liked that idea. And the reason that they did not like that idea is, and it's true, on a day-to-day basis, you wouldn't believe, and I'm going to use the word insanity, that comes in the doors in terms of zoning and planning. It is bonkers. And that's not a politically correct term, but it really is. It is, the questions and the quantity of questions and just the bizarreness that comes in is quite overwhelming. So when I decided to separate with Ms. Orton, I called Mr. Healy and I said, "Dave, can we revisit this idea?" And we both kind of started to think that my original idea was okay, but I think it stemmed on the one issue, and that is, who's going to be the face at City Hall on a daily basis? And not unfortunately, but unfortunately, because of the circumstances, that comes down to one employee, and that's Ms. McGrady. So Cheryl currently serves as my executive assistant. We like that working relationship, and we spoke to all of you, at least some of you, when we decided to start a relationship. We would like to continue that, but she needs to be probably more zoning and planning-related than just the executive assistant. So I say against the rule. Cheryl's not very excited about this, but she wants to do it for the good of Madera Beach because I think we both, again, I can probably speak for her, we feel bad that we maybe brought some embarrassment to the town. She is willing to become the executive assistant slash planning and zoning coordinator. And then Gwen Sinkfield, who works for us, who was working for Michelle Orton, will work with Cheryl under her direction and be another executive assistant slash planning zoning coordinator under her. So those two will operate in conjunction, so to speak. Cheryl, at least at this point, Ms. McGrady at this point, is, and well-deserved, and I know her and Mr. Everett have this ongoing joke about the $4 raise the board gave her, of which I was accused of lining my pockets. Cheryl does not want a raise for doing this. And it's unfortunate because, just like what you said about me, there's not enough money in the world to give me to do what she's got to do now on a daily basis. But we're going to try this for six months. And the reason why I want to do it for six months is this. Three months kind of gets us out of the path of these two major developments. Though, in theory, I think that we'll probably get to the point where we're at final approvals on some of them, and then we'll be sitting around probably waiting for the courts to sort some things out. And then what I want to say is, we can kind of get back to routine planning and zoning world, if you would, at Madera Beach, and see what that workload is like, and see if we can't do that. With that being said, Al Carrier's company has agreed, and Dave Healy's company has agreed to meet with us. I know we have a process, I think we have Marcy every two days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then we're going to have Louis from Dave Healy's company once a week. And then every other Thursday, we're going to create a committee internally of that group of people, the Public Works Director, the building official, the fire official, everybody to get these permits kind of processed. And it's going to take a little more time than usual. And I know some of you, you know, you'll get a phone call from a resident or somebody, you know, I don't want to say a commercial business name out loud, but you guys are under pressure to get your permits approved in expeditious fashion sometimes. And we have 30 days, actually, to do that from the time that they're put in. We usually turn them around in about 48 hours, maybe 72 hours. It's going to take a little bit of time now. Not substantial time, it might take a week. If there's things that need to be expedited, we can certainly do that. But most cities take 30 days, you know, and so this is one of those things that I think we need to slow down and take a look at because frankly, when we go expeditiously, we find that we, some things fall through the cracks. From a budget standpoint, without adjusting Cheryl's salary, I think this is at least budget-neutral. I think Vince would disagree with me, but when I say budget-neutral, we're already broke the budget because we've got a lot of expenses in terms of planning and zoning and everything that's been going on. So the budget is, at least right now, broken. I don't see this adding to the brokenness of that, so to speak. And I think we'll just have to deal with that fiscally throughout the year, as Vince and I kind of proceed throughout the year and see where we end up. But this is just something that I want to do for six months and then revisit it and see where we're at. Because I'm not against hiring a planning and zoning director, but I'm not going to put an ad in the paper and, you know, interview five candidates and pick the best one. I really need, I've been through this nightmare one too many times now, and I think we really need to, if something comes along, that's great. Otherwise, I'd like to keep the two experts that we've got. If you look at it, you know, how many times have you seen Dave Healy at a Board of Commissioners meeting or a planning commission in the last couple of months? He's here all the time. So we might as well use the expert and use the people that have the primary expertise. So this does not require your approval. Again, it would have if you're going to adjust Cheryl's salary. She's scared to death of it, so I'm telling you, let's not adjust that. I'm asking you not to do that. I think if I make a recommendation, I might be, I don't know, there's no more organizations to get kicked out of. But if I recommend something for my fiancee, I think that that's probably out of order. You can certainly do that. What I suggest is hit the brakes. Let's What I suggest is hit the brakes. Let's circle the airport. Let's see what happens. And if that system works out, you can address it in the next year's budget. So with that, that's how we're going to operate, folks. There will be times, Mayor, you're the one that gets in the most. "Hey, where's my permit?" "Well, you applied this morning. It's not going to be approved yet. You know, we need a couple of days." Our goal is to turn them around in less than a week. And I think we can do that. And I think that that's fair.
And far as Ms. McGrady, usually if I have a planning question and I'm asking you, she usually can bounce it off the top of her head, because she has quite a great background in it coming from Seminole. I know she did it for here in Madeira Beach for a couple of years. So it's not like you're just throwing, somebody that doesn't know what they're doing in there, she has a heavy background in this, so.
Well, if you want to freak her out, Mayor, the podium's right there. You can ask her what her resume is.
No, I know I don't need to do that, because I know from, you know, being in Madeira Beach and being on a planning commission and also the mayor here for six years, I know that she's been behind that counter for quite a while, so she's quite.
Well, two things. A, she's got about twenty-six years' experience. And B, when I told Mr. Healy that Cheryl would be the face or the day-to-day person, that changed his opinion of how I wanted to structure it, and I think that that went a long way with me. So again...
And I just saw the thumbs up from him. And if anybody in Pinellas County, everybody in Pinellas County, when it comes to planning, knows Mr. Healy.
And I don't know, Al's gone, but we get Marcy back this way, too. So we get the band back together, and I think it's really going to work well. And we'll do what we can to expeditiously get those permits through. The big zoning stuff, you know, there's going to be an end to that at some point, and so I don't want to overreact, and we'll just keep up the best we can. And if it doesn't work out, you'll secure it for me in thirty days, and we'll figure something out. All right? So if you're all right...
Item number seven, you'd like to go ahead?
Item number seven, I'd like you to refer to the next meeting, which is a week from today at noon. You're going to have three items on the agenda, and I'll bring those up, Mr. Mayor, under my report. And my report will be about three minutes, so we can get out of here.
And Mr. City Attorney, I can just do that with the consensus of the board, or do I need to have a vote on that to remove item number seven to next Tuesday's meeting?
I'm pulling it from the agenda, so no, you don't need any action on that. I would like maybe a vote of confidence so far on that restructure, if you don't mind. You don't have to vote on it.
I think we could do that with a consensus.
If I can just get a thumbs up from the commission, and again, we'll be revisiting it in June or July.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And like I said, I'm sure everybody in Pinellas County knows Mr. Healy's background. And I just want to throw out a thing about bringing Marcy back. And I had a chance to meet some residents for the first time. And I had been talking to Congressman Jolly's staff, and Congressman Jolly, who's working on, he's still out there working, guys. He is still working, and he's working for Madeira Beach, and was on some FEMA loans. And so the residents were talking about working with Marcy and just couldn't say enough about her. So I think it's a very, very positive move. I think you've made a very positive move there, Mr. City Manager.
You've got to surround yourself with tens, Mr. Mayor. We've got all tens, so.
That's what you want on your football team. All right. So I guess we'll move right to reports and correspondence. Does any Commissioners have any reports or correspondence?
I just want to welcome the new commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to go back, and I want to publicly thank Congressman Jolly. He's not the congressman anymore, but he's still out there working for us. And thank you, David. That's, you're a hell of a man. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I don't really have anything for you tonight. I would just remind the new commissioner to make sure that we get a resignation letter in, that she has resigned for the Planning Commission before she took the position here on the city commission. And you're also going to need to sign your oath. If you don't have that in blank form, we have one here for you tonight. You can take with you if you can get it filled out, or the city clerk will provide you with one at your convenience, but we need to have that done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
MC Clerk?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Hey, I'm Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. The award for City Hall, I just want to say, and the board made the tough decisions, but there was a core group of staff, Dave Marscano, the chief, Vince, myself, the building official, and I hired him. That was a lot of work, and so I just want to make sure that my staff is recognized for that. Meeting next Tuesday. Liquor license for Slice opening up, hopefully early February first? We found some more parking in town that we want to lease. Vince and Dave have been working on that. We'll have that ready. And then this new agreement with Mr. Healy. So that will be a fifteen-to-thirty-minute meeting from twelve to twelve-thirty. I hate to do it to you during the day. If that is problematic for anybody, let me know. I'm going to do Cheryl a favor real quick. The T.I. Chamber Gala. Mr. Lister, are you interested in going with your wife? Now she's watching at home. Now you've got to go.
His microphone's off. He doesn't sound, did he?
I don't think I'm my wife. All right. I didn't say anything. You're in? All right. Nancy Hodges, you in? Mr. Mayor, you're in? Ingrid, are you in? Thursday night at? Thursday night at six o'clock? All right, I'll give you, I'll tell you what. Email Cheryl tomorrow by noon, because we got to get the final count in. And if you're bringing a guest, you're welcome to bring a guest, but email Cheryl about that. Minutes memo, did everybody read that? And again, don't, I didn't mean, I hate that when, you know, I didn't want you to think, "Oh, here's Shane working on New Year's Day, and now he wants us to know that he's doing it." But those minutes, if you look at Amy or you ask Cheryl or Gwen, those take a ridiculous amount of time. And to be quite honest, I don't know if anybody really reads them anymore, because if you want to see what happened at the meeting, you're watching the video now. You're not reading the minutes. Technology has just surpassed that. And so all we're required to do is do the action minutes, and that's going to probably save a day of staff time, which staffed at the level we're at, I'd like to do that. So unless anybody has a problem with that, we're going to do that at this level and the Plan Commission level, which is not cutting new territory with anybody. A lot of cities do that. I also want to introduce to the Plan Commission meeting, and Mr. Healy's here, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash oh-two that we just passed tonight, if we can get going on changing the methodology behind that. But also, I want the Plan Commission to consider moving their date, because we have a Plan Commission meeting and a Board of Commissioners meeting right in a row. And so like next month, it's very possible that the Board of Commissioners, or the Plan Commission will consider a major development, and then it'll be on your plate, possibly the very next night. I don't like that. We need a week of, we need, staff needs a week of time. Y'all need a week of time. So I'd like to, the board and the Plan Commission to consider meeting on the first Monday instead of the second Monday of the month. So that's something that we'll be bringing up. And then again, and Tom touched on it, Ingrid, if you can just get me an email or a formal letter of resignation from the Plan Commission, and then Madam City Clerk will be advertising to Phil. It seems like we're advertising for a vacant seat almost every month, but that's all right, so. There you are. So, and Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. And once again, Vince, thank you. David, thank you. And everybody, have a good evening. See you. No further business. This meeting is adjourned at thirty-eight P.M.